Good evening. It's a great night to work on behalf of Fort Worth ISD kids. And upon that note, I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is exactly 5:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will move immediately to pledges, which will be led by Clint Bond.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Bond, could you continue with our recognitions?
Yes, President Jackson. Before I begin, I just want to remind everyone that this is our last meeting in this venue, in this room. The next meeting for the board will be held at the Professional Development Center on McCart Avenue. President Jackson, members of the board, Mr. Joseph Earl Breedlove Sr., attended and graduated from IM Terrell High School in 1959, where he was a star athlete in football and track. In a business climate not always welcoming to minority-owned companies, he opened his own business in 1969 and became the co-founder and owner with partner J.D. Richmond of The Craftsman. In 1991, he took on the role of project engineer for Conreal Inc., a large minority-owned construction company. He led large projects such as Frito-Lay and FedEx. He transitioned to the position of Senior Vice President of Construction and Safety and Partner. The Dallas Black Chamber of Commerce awarded him the Quest for Success Award. Mr. Breedlove served on the Board of Directors for the AIDS Outreach Center. He was a longstanding member of the Fort Worth Rotary Club, the Downtown Fort Worth YMCA, and the IM Terrell Academy for STEM and BPA. A highlight of his construction career included the contract for major renovation at IM Terrell and the construction of a new 900-seat performance hall. Mr. Breedlove passed away last month, and funeral services were held at IM Terrell. Board members, later this evening, you will be asked to name that 900-seat auditorium in his honor. And at this moment, President Jackson, I believe you want to introduce Joe Breedlove Jr.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Bond, and thank you for that beautiful tribute. My good friend is here, Joseph Breedlove Jr., along with Gerald Alley, granddaughter Isabella, and Martha, Joe Breedlove Sr.'s wife. And I would ask that they all come forward, and anyone that wants to speak on behalf of Joe Breedlove Sr., please do so. And thank you all for being here.
Well, thank you for those kind words. You know, this is really a special moment and event. And during a service, I knew there would be no way that I would be able to speak. And it's amazing how God works things out to where, hey, look, now it's time for you to say something. And the first thing I will say is what we were taught as children, and that's thank you. Something, I think, one of the first things you should be taught as a child is thank you. Thank you to the Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees, by my dear friend Toby Jackson, and a special thank you to Daphne Brookins, Daphne Brookins, excuse me, and Superintendent Dr. Scribner and the staff for allowing the service to take place at IM Terrell. And then everyone who's involved. A special thank you to Ms. Coulson that works in the facility. She did a wonderful job in arranging everything to have happened. And of course, Ricky Brown, the principal there, cannot say enough about how he worked with us to make sure that happened. And, you know, on this day, it's pretty overwhelming, the honor in itself for my dad. And he would probably be a little choked up, believe it or not. And you probably don't believe that because he runs his mouth all the time, much like I do. I guess that's why I'm a junior. But I tell you what, some things he would probably say. He would say thank you for being a part of an IM Terrell community that, through the deep history, helped create and mold individuals that value pride, courage, and excellence. He would also thank Fort Worth ISD, much like I do, for all your efforts these past 16 to 19 months, as you navigated our children through a tough time. And with your support in a group that sometimes was overlooked, and I'm going to be honest with you, and that's our educators, talking about really essential, and they were. And I think they were overlooked quite a few times by the media, but with your support, you presented a wonderful product. And I look forward to the '21-'22 school year, and I'm sure they do too. In June, he rested in peace on the stage of a building that he was able to help construct, a facility that he wanted to be sure that everyone in the district could be proud of. And ironically, he would like to thank, I guarantee you, he would want to thank Gerald Alley and the entire Conreal family for the opportunity to make sure that that happened. He would also thank the people around him that supported him, and his friends and relatives, loved ones. And as he always did, he challenged everyone around him to fulfill their dreams and never give up. And I hope through the years, as every student enters the Joseph Earl Breedlove Sr. Auditorium, we'll see the thousands of young people realizing his or her dreams as they venture into that venue. I'm just going to thank you on behalf of the Breedlove family, extended friends and family, the deepest gratitude for naming the beautiful IM Terrell Auditorium after someone who personified passion, work ethic, and grace. And my wife told me not to go off script, so I'm not. So again, thank you, and I appreciate everything. And oh, I'm so happy you guys are here. Martha, you want to say something?
I just want to thank everybody for all the love that they've shown for Joe and our family during this time. And he would just be beside himself. I can't even imagine how he would respond, other than he'd probably be in tears. But he would be so humble and so appreciative of what everyone has done to honor him in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. I'm Gerald Alley, and I'm proud to say Joe was our partner, my mentor, and the guiding light in the true North South for our organization. Many years ago, when I met Joe, he used to call me "young fellow." And back then, I had an Afro this size, and it was all black. Times have changed, but Joe is always, we've known in the organization, no matter what person he was talking to, he always would take time to ask, "How were they doing?" We considered him the teacher. No matter what the skill set required, he was the teacher. And he was always that voice in the back, "Is everybody all right? Is everybody good?" So with that, our organization is proud to say one of our most prolific projects we've had is the IM Terrell Project. And it couldn't be a better tribute than to name the auditorium, to name Joe, because he promoted education, arts, people seeking their goals, and most of all, he promoted helping others as you help yourself. So again, thank the board, thank the individuals, and most of all, because my wife is a teacher, thank all teachers that support students. Thank you.
If the Breedlove family would remain here, trustee Daphne Brookins will come forward and present them with a certificate. Our next recognition is Mrs. Opal Lee. Do I need to say anymore? She is a retired Fort Worth ISD teacher, counselor, and graduate. She may be best known for her efforts to make Juneteenth a federally recognized holiday. For that, she is often described as the grandmother of Juneteenth. Born in Marshall, Texas, her family moved to Fort Worth. When she was 10 years old, she attended IM Terrell High School. The events that occurred on East Annie Street in Fort Worth involving her family have been well-publicized. But some may not realize that the destruction of her family's house happened on Juneteenth, 1939. In 1952, Mrs. Lee graduated Wiley College with a bachelor's degree in elementary education. And after attending North Texas State University, now UNT, and earning a master's degree, she returned to Fort Worth, where she taught and was a counselor in Fort Worth ISD schools. Following retirement, she helped found the Tarrant County Black Historical and Genealogical Society. She helped organize Fort Worth's annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration, Black History Month, and Juneteenth celebrations. Mrs. Lee campaigned for decades to make Juneteenth a federal holiday, and at the age of 89, she walked from Fort Worth to Washington, DC. She was hoping to plead the case for a federally holiday directly to President Barack Obama. She said, "It's going to be a national holiday. I have no doubt about it. My point is, let's make it a holiday in my lifetime." In June 2021, at the age of 94, her efforts succeeded, as a bill to make Juneteenth a federal holiday was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Joseph Biden. She was an honored guest at the bill signing ceremony, receiving one of the first of the many pens Biden used to sign the document. Mrs. Lee has been an honored member of the Fort Worth ISD Wall of Fame since 2019. Now Sharon Goodspeed Keaton from the Bass Opera will perform a cappella in honor of Mrs. Lee. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Opal Lee.
Young people, and you are all young people if you're not 94. I'm humbled. I just thought I'd come up here and get a plaque and go home. But that was, as the young people say, "off the chain." Oh. And when I knew I was coming, I got to thinking about the years I spent at Fort Worth ISD. It was McCoy School. I taught third grade, eight-year-olds so long that I was beginning to act like them, so they gave me another position. I was the visiting teacher, not teaching, just seeing that our youngsters stayed in school. And so if it was shoes, clothes, the lights were off, no place to spread, that was my responsibility to see that those children stayed in school, and I loved it. Well, when I retired in '77, people still needed food and a place to stay. And so we started a food bank, and it services some 500 families a day. The one we had on the south side burned, and the one big old building, huge building, behind my house. And those people had it on the market for $1.3 million. They leased it us, leased the building to us for $4,000 a month. And I nearly had a hemorrhage. Why are we going to get any $4,000? But we paid it 11 months, and the month we didn't have it, they came to us and said, "You're doing a good job." And they gave us that $1.3 million building. Well, I polled some of the people standing in line for food, and 66 of them said they liked a farm. I asked the water district, and they gave me the use of 13 acres of land. And we got produce like you've never seen before. We got the best farm manager in these parts. And so we share it with the food bank and the WIC program, and we go to market with some of it, and there are restaurants who ask us for certain things, and we grow it for them. I'm just delighted with all the people that are supporting us. And if I get to telling you about Juneteenth, y'all will be here all night long. But to finally, after taking 1,500,000 signatures to Congress, and the Senate was just about to unanimously give us their vote, one lone senator decided he wouldn't. Now, that same senator had offered to make Juneteenth a national holiday instead of Columbus Day. But when it was his turn to help pass that bill, he didn't. All of that died. I was kind of heart sick, but I did a lot of praying. And I was at the press club, the National Press Club, and that very same day, the Senate and the House of Representatives authored new bills. And when the Senate gave its consent, I was jubilant. I wanted to do a holy dance, but my thing with holy dances is they turn out to be twerks. What the hell, the House of Representatives come right along? I thought it was going to be another year. Oh. And then somebody called my granddaughter Dionne and says, "This is the White House." And they needed us the next day. I'd have walked up there. But it was awe-inspiring. It truly was to have the President of the United States talk to you and sign your bill into law. I wouldn't have done the holy dance, but that twerking stuff has gotten in the way. But thank you, Fort Worth ISD. Just know that I appreciate every single one of you. And just know that this is just the beginning. We can't rest on our laurels. We've got much work to do. And do you know I'm starting with education? Dr. Scribner, you know me well enough to know I'm going to come knocking on your door because I want our books. I wrote a little book called "Juneteenth: A Children's Story," and I want it in every classroom, every school. I know the kids in the high school are going to thumb through that thing and read it so quick it's not even funny, but I want them at least touching. You see, I want so much for our schools. I want everybody on the same page. And mentioning of the same page, I'm going to ask you to make yourself a committee of one. I want you to change somebody's mind. People can be taught to hate, they can be taught to love, and you can change people's minds. Won't be easy, because I've tried it, but it can be done. And just think, if 3 million people were on the same page, this would be a slam dunk. It would be a fabulous place to live. No more joblessness, no more hunger, no more pipeline from the schools to the prison, no more climate change. And I really think that's our fault. We are desecrating the earth, and we ought to do better. And I think we all go into hell in a handbasket if we don't. But thank you, Fort Worth ISD, for allowing me the time.
Trustee Daphne Brookins will come forward and present a certificate.
Thank you all for joining in the wonderful presentations tonight that exemplify what IM Terrell was, what IM Terrell is, and what IM Terrell will be. And on that note, I want to hand it off to the person that has IM Terrell in their single-member district, trustee Daphne Brookins, who brought this to us this evening.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to bring forth two of the strong community leaders who have paved the way for our students in our community. Both Mr. Breedlove and Ms. Opal have created a blueprint for greatness, and I'm so excited to be a part of that. And it's hard for me to speak right now because it's just overwhelming. I want to be like you, if I live to be 94. So thank you so much for all that you've done and continue to do, so I can inspire to be like you and inspire our next generation to do so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, and also Dionne, thank you. I know that we had late-night conversations, and you're always there, and you always answer that phone, because I know Opal Lee is popular. And on that, Clint, I will ask you to continue with recognitions.
Wait, one quick more announcement. I just wanted to thank Sharon Godspeed Keaton for that rendition of "Stand Up" from the Harriet Tubman movie. She is also an alumni of Odie Wyatt High School, as well as the young man who accompanied her tonight. So I just wanted to thank them for that awesome rendition.
Tonight, we recognize seven Fort Worth ISD campuses for earning distinctions as a Project Lead the Way distinguished school. Project Lead the Way's recognition program is designed to honor districts and schools committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in their Project Lead the Way programs. Through the curriculum and hands-on learning approach, student interest and passion are elevated, and consequently, student performance in science, technology, engineering, and math excels. Before we begin, let's take a moment to recognize the Project Lead the Way Director of School Engagement for Texas April Moon for her support and guidance for our large district. Unfortunately, she is unable to attend, but let's recognize her anyway. Unfortunately, she is unable to attend, but let's recognize her anyway. To be a nationally recognized elementary campus, a minimum of 75% of the students at that campus must complete a launch module, which includes several activities and a project that are related to an overarching problem in the area of STEM. In addition, the school must offer a minimum of two modules per grade level and have at least two Project Lead the Way lead teachers on their campus. In Texas, there are only, I'm sorry, in Texas, there are almost 200 active elementary programs, but only 11 districts have campuses receiving the 2020-21 Distinguished Launch School Recognition. The following elementary schools have been designated as 2020-21 Distinguished Launch Schools in Project Lead the Way. And if the principal is here when I announce as we go through, if they would stand, please. M.H. Moore Elementary School, led by Principal Elizabeth Yoder. The new principal will be Ricardo Alvarez. H.V. Helbing Elementary, led by Principal Anna Morales. Diamond Hill Elementary, led by Principal Marilyn Martinez. I'm sorry, Marlin Martinez, my mistake, sorry. Cesar Chavez Elementary, led by Principal Monica Ordés. To be a nationally recognized middle school campus, a minimum of 50% of the students at that campus must complete a gateway unit, which is a STEM unit that lasts nine weeks to a full semester and includes multiple activities and projects. In addition, the school must offer a minimum of one gateway unit per grade level, and 25% of the students advancing to high school must have participated in two or more units. The school must have strategies in place to support reasonably proportional representation with regard to race, ethnicity, poverty, and gender. In Texas, there are currently over 400 active middle school programs, but only 10 campuses receive the 2020-21 Distinguished Gateway School Recognition, and one of them is here in Fort Worth ISD. Young Women's Leadership Academy, led by their principal Tamara Albury. And their Project Lead the Way gateway teacher is Marcia Bean. To be a nationally recognized high school campus, the campus must offer a Project Lead the Way pathway in either the biomedical science, computer science, or engineering. The campus must enroll students in three or more courses, and a minimum of 25% of all students must participate in the Project Lead the Way, or at least 33% of those participating must complete at least two Project Lead the Way courses. In addition, the school must have strategies in place to support reasonably proportional representation with regard to race, ethnicity, poverty, and gender. In Texas, there are currently over 300 active high school programs, but only 24 campuses received the 2020-21 Distinguished High School Recognition, and four are in the Fort Worth ISD. Young Women's Leadership Academy, again led by Tamara Alsbury, and Project Lead the Way High School Engineering Teacher Sergio Flores. Northside High School, led by their principal Antonio Martinez. The Project Lead the Way High School Engineering Teacher is Danielle Frank. Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences, led by their principal Jack Henson. The Project Lead the Way High School Biomedical Science Teachers are Ivan Kimmel, Yvette Mumford, and Elizabeth Van. To everyone, we thank you for the commitment to your teachers, students, and their families, and the school community. The distinguished, tonight, we also recognize our district partners, Bell Textron and Lockheed Martin, through the support and investment they made in our career and technical education programming. Bell Textron and Lockheed Martin provide paid engineering internships to high school students in addition to their successful and recognized university-level internships. The goal of the program is to engage students in real world, hands-on, in the high-demand, high-need engineering field. Students work alongside a mentor in various areas, including but not limited to engineering and technology, production operations, information technology, and supply chain. Lockheed Martin has a growing internship program that has expanded from five high school students to over 50 per year. It is their hope that the students return each summer after college to intern at Lockheed Martin and eventually join as a full-time employee at the completion of their college degree. Bell Textron has a growing internship program that has expanded from six high school students to almost 30 per year. It is through this investment that they will see students return during college to intern and eventually join their team full-time. Project Lead the Way course preparation prepared with students' strong passion and strengths in the STEM fields results in college and career success. Both Bell Textron and Lockheed Martin have bestowed a scholarship to each 2020-21 senior intern at the completion of their internship to continue their education in the STEM field. We'd like to take a moment to recognize our partners. First, Sharon Belda Verona is not here this evening. She is with early career programs with Lockheed Martin, but I understand that Liz Lutz of Community Relations at Lockheed, I'm sorry, at Project Lead the Way is here. Next, we recognize Lizzie Arrington, University Relations and Outreach Specialist with Bell We would like to also recognize our Project Lead the Way teachers who supported students through resume writing, application completion, and interview process. Tina Vasquez of Benbrook Middle High School, Walter Parada of Diamond Hill Jarvis High School, and Sergio Flores of the Young Women's Leadership Academy. And last, but certainly not least, we would like to recognize our 2020-21 Lockheed Martin and Bell Textron interns. If they are here, would please stand to be recognized when your name is called. We can applaud them all when we conclude. Completing an internship at Bell Textron from Young Women's Leadership Academy are Penelope Huff, Selena Morales, Brianna Navarro, and Haley Spradlin. Completing an internship at Lockheed Martin, we recognize again from YWLA, Imena Ballin, Alandro Gonzalez, and Emily Lesper. Also in that same group is Lytze Lee Sosa and Priscilla Trejo. From Diamond Hill Jarvis High School, Jose Cruz. And the following students are all from Benbrook Middle High School, Frederick Jones, Camden Lebashe, Brandon Muse, and Justice White. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. And at this time, trustee Andor will read the names of the industry partners. Trustee Andor.
Thank you, President Jackson. Fort Worth ISD leaders and partners came together on Tuesday, July 20th, for a signing ceremony that commits to a collaboration shaping the future of Fort Worth. This special industry partner signing day celebrated business partners who currently provide, or will provide, work-based experiences for students through the district's PTEC and Vital Link programs. After remarks by Dr. Scribner and others, dozens of representatives of each partner organization stepped forward to sign an oversized banner depicting the Fort Worth ISD tree logo that included a pledge to work together to prepare students for success in college, career, and community leadership. That banner is in this room tonight for all to see, and I'll direct you to the back of the room where you can see the banner where our industry partners signed. The list of partners includes American Airlines, Bass Performance Hall, Bell Textron Incorporated, Campfire First Texas, Circle Theater, the City of Fort Worth, the City of Fort Worth Water Department, Danone North America, Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce, the Fort Worth Opera, Fort Worth ISD Human Capital Management, Path Associates Incorporated, Hilltop Holdings, Hilltop Securities, Hispanic Heritage Foundation, Historic Fort Worth Incorporated, IEC Fort Worth, Tarrant County, the James L. West Center for Dementia Care, Jubilee Theater, Junior Achievement of the Chisholm Trail, Lockheed Martin, Magna Mechanical, Medical City of Fort Worth, North Texas Automobile Dealers, Encore, Stage West Theater, Stimuli Education, Tarrant Two and Through, the T3 Partnership, Carleton State University, the Culinary School of Fort Worth, Tinker, UltraSafe Ultrasound Diagnostic Services LLC, the University of North Texas, the University of North Texas College of Education, and Z-Space. Thank you to these community partners who recognize, who promote, who support, and who celebrate the potential of students and the potential in classrooms. So, we are thankful and we are grateful for your partnership.
Thank you, trustee Andor and Mr. Bond, and congratulations to everyone who is here tonight, and thank you for being here to witness history. And if you haven't toured I Am Terrell, please do so. But right now, we're going to take a little five-minute break, so if you want to go tour, I'd go see Ms. Washington right now, Mr. Moore down there, and let's get those tours I'm going to make a quick announcement. The audio of this meeting was not working at the beginning of the meeting. Everything is fixed now. I would also like to report that Fort Worth ISD had no control over these issues, not because they were our issues, but they were external, which is a really good thing. You should clap for that, actually. This technology is tricky. And the other thing I would like to say is that in the morning, you will be able to view the video in its entirety with audio from the beginning until end. At this time, we will hear public comment. Let me remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on this agenda. However, the board may reply with, one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or three, direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy or have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. No presentation may exceed three minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. For those of you who are speaking tonight, sanitation wipes are available at each podium. I ask that you please observe all of the rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. And what I will say is, there are some children here tonight, and while children won't listen to all public comment, eventually, children will hear public comment, and they'll realize this was during the time they were in school. I, for one, would love for them to hear how much we love and care about them and how much we care about their success today and tomorrow. And on that, we'll call down Alex Force and Robert Bueker to this podium, Amanda Coleman and Malik Austin to the other podium. Please begin when you're ready. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you. My name is Alex Force. My daughter attends Daggett-Montessori School, and I'm speaking on behalf of over 50 other people who could not speak today, and I've got that list if y'all are willing to take it. We have a problem. All students are required to return to school in person August 16th, even unvaccinated children with serious underlying health conditions. Children under 12 are not eligible to be vaccinated, and the governor's order prohibits public schools from requiring masking, and optional masking is ineffective. Fort Worth ISD does not allow a virtual learning at-home option for unvaccinated children, even children with underlying health conditions, like my 10-year-old daughter. She's too young to be vaccinated. Her school won't require masks, and a positive case for her and other children like her could mean hospitalization or worse. And if she temporarily withdraws from school long enough to get vaccinated, then she is not eligible to return to that school. Her spot will be filled, and she can't go back. We bought a house for this school. We built our lives around proximity to this school. But if we keep our daughter home to keep her safe, we lose the school. For families like ours, the current position of the district is simple: get sick or get out. There has to be a better way. They've found a better way in districts all across the state who are now offering virtual learning for K through 6, regardless of state funding, so it can be done. And it's time for this district to lead and act now to protect vulnerable children. I have three solutions for your consideration. Plan A is to require masks for all Fort Worth schools. You can push back on the governor's order. You can sue the state, but you might not do it. So, Plan B is to offer a virtual learning at-home option for unvaccinated children with underlying health conditions. That makes in-person class size smaller and everyone safer. We already have the infrastructure to do it. Students have laptops. Some schools have free neighborhood Wi-Fi now. And think about this: if a student tests positive or has exposure of COVID while at school in person, that student will have to quarantine. And what will happen for those 10 days of quarantine? Those students will have an at-home virtual learning option, so why can't we just do it now for these vulnerable children? Plan C is to allow students to temporarily pause their enrollment at a choice school long enough to be vaccinated. Over the years, students have left choice programs and schools in the middle of a semester, and they don't just pluck a child from their neighborhood school and put them in that program immediately. They wait till the next semester. So, why can't we wait for these children? That's the least you can do, but I hope you'll do more.
Thank you, Mr. Force. Robert Bueker, then Amanda Coleman, then Malik Austin.
Thank you for letting us speak. I'm quoting this from a tweet that we had came across in our group. "I'll be teaching my students how to dismantle white supremacy until they escort me out of the building. I'm in Fort Worth. Anyone who feels uninclined to replace me can surely try. #CRT, #abolitionist teaching." Still sitting currently is this teacher, which will remain anonymous, but I will give this to y'all so y'all can see for yourselves. I'm going to read from the Texas Administration Code, Chapter 247, line G, standard 1.7, "The educator shall comply with state regulations, written local board policies, and other state federal laws." Line 10, "Intentionally, an educator acts intentionally or with the intent with respect to the nature of his or her conduct or a result of his or her conduct when his or her conscious objective or desires engages into conduct or cause of the result." Line 1, "To protect the safety and welfare of Texas schoolchildren. A mental or emotional injury to a student or minor that results in observable mental impairment is the student's or minor's development, learning, or psychological functioning." Line B, "Causing or permitting a student or minor to be in a situation where the student or minor sustains a mental or emotional injury that results in observable mental impairment the student's or minor's development, learning, or psychological functioning." Key word there, "psychological functioning." Line 3, "Ethical conduct towards students." Line B, standard 3.2, "The educator shall, not intentionally knowing or recklessly treating a student or minor in a manner that adversely affects or endangers the learning of physical health, mental... mental health, or the safety of the minor." Standard 3.4. "The educator shall not exclude a student from participating in a program, deny benefits to a student or grant an advantage to a student on the basis of race, color, gender, disability, nationality, origin, religion, family status, or sexual orientation." Kind of sounds like CRT, but we won't talk about that. Line E, Standard 3.5. "The educator shall not intentionally knowing or recklessly engage in physical mistreatment, neglect, or abuse of a student or minor." Standard 3.9. "The educator shall refrain from inappropriate communication with a student or minor, including but not limited to electronic communications such as cell phone, text messaging, email, instant messaging, blogging, or other social networking communications factors that may be considered and assessing whether the communication is improper but not are limited to." Equity is the master of critical race theory and also what hides behind S E L O. What is sad is the amount of Twitter messages that we're seeing throughout these schools and the teachers and no accountability, no checks and balances. How have we lost checks and balances? That's why you have political action committees like the ones that we are a part of, and we have to come out and we have to do y'all's job for you. And we do it free, but we do it because we love the kids. And it's sad to see that just in Keller alone, I can speak on that. It's 41% jump, is a jump from 21% on the star math scores. And that's just math alone. So let's just look at the other, you know, subjects they have. So we're so busy worried about CRT and teaching kids, you know, to hate one race over another, and we should be grabbing each other's hands and really looking at the bigger picture.
Thank you, Mr. Bueker.
Thank you.
Amanda Coleman.
I just learned you spend $2 million a year on our racial equity department that was created by our current superintendent. I find it interesting that since he's arrived and the equity department was created, student achievement has drastically dropped as well during that time. We're now worse than even Dallas and Houston, and we weren't before he arrived. Is that a coincidence? I'd like to know. What are the goals of this department that costs us so much in tax dollars? Are these goals measurable? And what's their deadline? How are you able to justify these costs, such as paying a consultant $6,000 who spoke twice at a racial equity summit? Or paying the department head over $200,000 annually? How will you know it's time to cut your losses and abandon ship? Speaking of abandoning ship, have you noticed how many charter schools are popping up all over Fort Worth? I talked to the man in charge of recruiting and privately funding them. I asked, "Why his foundation spends their millions on charters when they could use it instead to make our local schools better?" His response blew me away. He said, "They already tried that. They poured millions into Fort Worth ISD for years. They weren't seeing the return on investment they expected, measured in student achievement, so they diverted their money elsewhere." As taxpayers, we don't have that choice, but we can collectively demand transparency, accountability, and a solid return on investment or new leadership who will deliver on results. Thank you.
Malik Austin.
I'm back. I've been out there in the streets. As a revolutionary, I will not tolerate no more disparity in the South Southeast Side. I see what's going down. You raised my taxes on my house, and I've seen the things that I've seen. I'm from the South Side. And I'm tired of looking at Morningside Elementary the way it looks. We cannot go along with these disparities anymore. 500 soldiers I brought to Mill Street. 500. I got 500 more. But today, my evolution is my revolution. I am a revolutionary that will stand up and fight for my children. My children are existence. I won't tolerate this anymore. We can't do this. You dare attack an Afro-American curriculum that spent 372 days to bring to this school district, and now that's up under the gun, and you dare and keep your silence and don't stand up and fight for these babies? Race cannot be defined by the body, a land. Africa, African-American curriculum, defined by culture and heritage. You go back to the state, Mr. Scrivener, on my $276,000 that you get paid every annual year, and my comrades that sit on this board. So you have an obligation to do what the community is asking you to do. That's your job. If not, hey, bro, there's other dishes that you can go to. If you don't like your job and you don't do what the community asks you to do, you have to leave, man. And that goes for everybody up here that you dare strike at my foreparents, my ancestors that built this country. And they dare challenge us not to teach about culture in the classroom? That's illegal. Declaration, people, listen. Declaration, Notice of Declaration of Parental Rights. In that 151-005, Texas Educations Code 26001 clearly states any policy that these people come up with, it's totally illegal. It's against your parental rights. Early as 1925, the federal courts would stand by any parent that files this injunction against the district. So today, you scratched at the wrong one, brothers. We coming. And that's the only thing I got to say. Do the right thing. We all do here. Do the right thing. Do the right thing, brother. You're from the community. District 4, you're from those communities. You see what's going on. Food deserts, gentrification. Our schools are the only hub that we have to save our children. Do your job. Do your job unless somebody is bold enough to do it. We ready. Y'all have a good evening.
Angel Martinez. Missy Kara.
Good evening. I would like to inform the board about one of the Fort Worth ISD Equity Committee Chair comments about the last summer's riot. I believe that if you are going to have a co-chair, you need to make sure they are not politically and not pushing a left- or right-wing agenda. The comments should make you consider a new leadership for the Equity Committee. Here is a recording.
...based upon scientific expertise in medicine, and that understands that that also involves race, right? And racial equity. And we have to be dealing with that first and foremost. And then the last thing I want to say is that our community right now, like all of our nation, is on fire, right? And it should be because the systemic injustices that are baked into it are finally
Mr. Castillo.
...being revealed and brought to light by more people. And I'm so proud of our courageous students and teachers and parents and community members who have been out on the streets demanding a...
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Missy Kara. Mr. Austin. Mr. Austin, you had your moment to speak. Missy, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Missy Kara. I'm a Fort Worth ISD parent, and I'd first like to request a future town hall and board agenda item on CRT. Today, I'm here to address ESER funds allocation. I believe you receive these funds to support student learning recovery and other district needs. I've seen that several district programs were adopted and funded with intent to increase student achievement, but despite millions spent annually, overall student performance still has not improved. I have concerns that the Division of Equity and Excellence Program got approved and adopted based on narrowly focused demographic data that measured academic disparities based solely on ethnicity. Now I ask you, if at first you don't succeed, will you try again? Have you measured student performance using data about their parents and caregivers? For instance, marital, employment, educational income, primary language status, or age? Or have you considered their involvement in schools or lack thereof? I venture to say that these factors alone could be the strongest influencer of student performance, regardless of their skin color. I suggest it's time to reevaluate your strategy to increase student achievement and ask you to consider this. Quote, "When schools, families, and community groups work together to support learning, children tend to do better in school, stay in school longer, and like school more," end quote. That's from the Southwest Educational Developmental Lab. I commend you for recognizing the value of parent partnerships, and thank you for creating that department last year. I'd like to propose that you invest more in that program. For the benefit of our students, I ask you to allocate the remaining available $9.9 million of ESER funds that are found on Page 11 of the Student Learning Recovery Plan and allocate that to the Fort Worth ISD Parent Partnerships Department. Just imagine the potential student outcomes that could result from increased staffing and support and program funding over these next three years. This is an easy investment. There's solid evidence that student performance improved with a strong parent partnership program at one of our very own local schools. I believe the potential for return on your investment on this would be very high. I assert that there is not a more valuable program, technology, policy, or curriculum that's available that you can invest in other than one that builds the relationship between children and their families. Please, please consider to allocate these remaining ESER funds and give them to your parent partnerships program. parent partnerships program. And I ask you to please release those funds immediately for this school year. Thank you.
I kind of find that offensive.
Let's keep the outbursts down and let's all work together for kids tonight. I will ask the officer, one more outburst. They get one outburst after that. Please have individual removed until they can cool down and come back in and work for kids. Thank you. Excuse me ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. My name is Carol Guoneri. I am the grandmother of two charter school children in Fort Worth ISD. I too am a product of Fort Worth ISD. I graduated from Arlington Heights High School in 1963. Throughout the years, it is, it seems almost frightening to me that the board, the administration have completely lost focus of what their primary function is. And that is to teach our children to read, write, and perform mathematics. You all have become so profoundly distracted by critical race theory, emotional, social development, all of this extraneous stuff that really has no bearing on the student performance. Children go to school to learn. They want to learn how to read, how to write, and how to perform mathematics. We have a responsibility as parents and grandparents to provide the best education money can buy. You all are going to be receiving over $260 million to get the children back into focus from COVID-19. That would certainly pay, and also the $3 million that you're spending on critical race theory would pay for a lot of tutors in these lower performing schools to give those children the opportunity to succeed and to succeed proudly. Critical race theory is nothing in the world but reverse racism. You're pitting colors against colors. Children, I can guarantee you are colorblind. They don't see color. They see the child. And until we get things refocused, back to basics, and quit making excuses for why our children are not performing, then we're going to continue on the same path that we've been on for way too long a time. I implore you, please, get back to basics. No more excuses. Do what you are supposed to do, and that is to teach our children to read, write, and perform math. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hudson. I would like to tell you about a recent sacrifice I made. Last year, my family and I moved, decided to leave FW ISD and attend a charter school. Although I think this is the best decision for me and my family long term, I, it came with a huge personal sacrifice. My new school's oldest grade was fifth last year, which meant I had to repeat fifth grade, even though I was a straight A student. I like, I had to leave a teacher that I loved and a school that I loved. But that's not it. I left my best friend. I left my best friend because FW ISD continually wastes time and money where it shouldn't. I had to choose a better education rather than the one I was comfortable. I'm here because I believe my friend deserves a better education than the one you're providing. The mismanagement of tax dollars is out of control. You receive way more per child than my charter school is getting. But I can tell you from firsthand experience, my charter is way better of an, of an education. I dare you, no, I double dog dare you, to make a fraction of the sacrifice that I have and do what's right.
Followed by Alessandra Papa.
I had a question before I started. I know we're not supposed to speak negatively about any individual, but may I praise an individual within my...
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking.
I just want to start by saying how much better I feel after witnessing the first part of the, of the presentation today before the comments started. I was so heartened by Opal Lee and by her words, and I think that everyone here has the same main idea, which is to keep our kids safe and to keep them educated and to keep them taken care of. There is no argument, many of our children must be in person to receive basic services such as meals and help that they can't get at home. But we also need to recognize the fact that our children, our babies under 12 years old cannot be vaccinated. As of right now, if we do all attend in person without a mask mandate, we are simply setting Fort Worth ISD up to be a super spreader event. I'm told by people who try to comfort me about this, that children under 12 only get mild cases of the COVID virus. However, I don't think it is mild. We don't even know what the side effects of this are going to be in 20 years. From an insurance standpoint alone, in 20 years, if my daughter has COVID on her record and develops a heart murmur, can it be covered or will it be a preexisting condition keeping her from having it? Even more to the point than that, our children go home to families, even if the child themselves is not vulnerable, some of the people at home are. My husband has cancer. I had to look at my 10-year-old with tears streaming down his face when he said, mommy, what if I get COVID from someone at school and bring it home to dad? And I told him that I would do the best I could to protect him. I need Fort Worth ISD to stand behind that as well. I need you to protect all of our children. If you cannot enforce a mask mandate at all the schools, then there must be options for our fragile families. There is an option when someone is in quarantine that they'll receive educational service while at home. Why not start it off? For every child that we have the privilege of keeping home, we are keeping the children that are there in person, who have to be there perhaps, safer. Let's cut our numbers down. Let's do everything it takes to keep them safe now so that we can return to normal school when we can. We all want normalcy, but we're not there yet. We're not vaccinated. It's not time and thinking that it is simply a fantasy. I hear people in these comments waxing poetic about their version of what should be taught. Who cares what you're teaching if we're sentencing them to die? Who cares what we are teaching if we're not keeping them safe? You can shush all you want, but it's true. Our first responsibility is the safety of these children. Their education is a very important second, and I implore Fort Worth ISD to number one, keep masks in schools if at all possible. Number two, allow us an option for those of us who can to keep our children at home to do virtual learning. And number three, for those of us who make that choice, allow us to keep our spots in schools of choice we earned and worked hard for them. Thank you.
Followed by Brad McDaniel.
My name is Alessandra, and I'm here to speak because I'm concerned about lead contamination in Fort Worth ISD schools. Lead poisoning poses a serious threat to children. It can cause anemia, weakness, kidney damage, and brain damage, and children are more severely affected by lead contamination than adults are. Fort Worth was an early leader when it began testing for lead in 2016, and it has done great work to lower the levels of lead in Fort Worth public schools. However, there is more work to be done. The American Academy of Pediatrics says that there is no safe level of lead, and it recommends a standard of one part per billion. However, according to the ISD's own data, the most recent round of testing in 2019 showed that 95% of schools still have a level of lead that is above that recommendation of one part per billion. In fact, Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School even has a level of 141 parts per billion, and Andley Middle School has a level of 135. The district has made significant effort to lower lead levels and has followed, sorry, has followed what's called the three Ts guidance from the EPA. However, that guidance is actually outdated, and now the EPA recommends remediating lead to the lowest possible level. It is completely understandable that the district has been following these older recommendations because there have been changes in the last few years, but at the end of the day, there is still lead in the drinking water. Luckily, you have an opportunity to remedy this hazard. Right now, the district is considering how to allocate remaining ESER funds, and we ask that you use just a fraction of that funding to install water bottle filling stations in schools that have point-of-contact filters which are certified to filter out lead. ESER funds can be used to reduce environmental health hazards such as this one, and the funding could cover installation costs as well as replacement filters for several years after you maintain the lead. While state legislation would be an ideal way to approach the problem, bills around lead in public school drinking water have been introduced three times in the last several legislative sessions and have all failed. I would ask that this district continues to be a champion for children's health and fixes problem once and for all with the funding that is already available, rather than waiting at a minimum another two years for the possibility that the state will make a decision or issue further directing. Environment Texas has written a letter with this request. I've brought copies with me as well for the board members if there's someone I can give those. Great. And I look forward to discussing the matter in the third chair with you further and participating in the public.
Thank you.
For, thank you for allowing me to share some concerns with you this evening. I am a longtime resident of Fort Worth. Can't read my paper. A longtime resident of Fort Worth. I graduated from our public school system, and I'm a Fort Worth taxpayer. I love this city and I believe in the next generation of leaders that we can produce. But if Fort Worth ISD continues down the road of race-based ideologies and doesn't focus on individual academic achievement, then we'll fail our city and our city's children. I'm so glad Ms. Jackson made the comment about making sure that we know that children will hear what we say about them tonight, because that was on my heart. I want all of Fort Worth ISD students here tonight, that were here last month, or anyone who might hear my comments tonight or on video, to know that you are valuable. You aren't valuable because you are black, white, or brown, male or female, gay or straight. You're valued because you were created in the image of God. I urge all of you students not to give imperfect, broken human beings like us the power to judge your worthiness or potential. A perfect God has already determined that you are valuable. Our school district is failing our city and our city's children. It needs to get back to basics and focus on academics and valuing students as individuals, not value, valuing them by statistics and achievement based on race or ethnic groups. We've heard over the past few months that critical race theory is not taught in our schools. That may actually be true. I don't know this for a fact. You may not teach directly this theory or offer classes on it to children. Let's assume that's true for a moment. But as I've read and done research on Fort Worth ISD's own website, it's become very obvious that CRT and other race-based ideologies and worldviews are being promoted and adopted throughout the district at the instructor and administrator level. So it's only natural that it will bleed into the daily instruction that children receive. If you tell us that CRT is not a part of Fort Worth ISD's ideology, you're either lying or uneducated. I would hope that neither would be true. The most obvious example of this district's, the most obvious example of this is the district's own racial equity committee homepage. The minutes for this committee meeting are filled with CRT-influenced language, and I'm hoping it's a coincidence, but I also noticed that the past three months, when we've had the most tension in these board meetings, the past three months of that committee's meetings weren't online. They weren't posted. But Crucial Conversations About Race is filled in those, is, is, occupies a lot of those meeting minute space, and Crucial Conversations About Race is merely CRT-repackaged, and it's present in every meeting's minute. Thank you.
Ken Cool. Followed by Martina Van Norden.
Good evening trustees, Superintendent Skribner, and Fort Worth ISD administrators. I'm a Fort Worth ISD parent. My daughter attends a Title I elementary school in this district. I'm here tonight to express my support for all the work you do, all the work you do in racial equity. It's important work, and it's being overshadowed right now by people who don't appreciate how important that work is. Let me just say it that way. I'm an active volunteer at my daughter's school and other schools in the district. So I talk to a lot of students, a lot of administrators, a lot of parents, a lot of teachers. Not one of them has ever expressed any concern to me about the racial equity work that this district does. I'm hearing it tonight. Why is that? I think we can thank politics, and politics don't belong in this room. What belongs in this room is a universal care and concern for all our students. But there's folks here tonight, and that were here last month, that are receiving talking points from national political organizations that are trying to silence voices from marginalized and disenfranchised populations, not just in our city, but across the country. They had their seminar just four days ago in Irving on Saturday, where speakers from the Heritage Foundation trained the attendees on how to harass school boards like this one with Freedom of Information Act requests and with speakers telling false narratives about racial equity work. And you're hearing it tonight. These national political organizations are gaslighting folks to believe that racial equity work is racist and that political, and that public schools have become indoctrination camps. Nothing could be further from the truth. My daughter's in this district. I wouldn't be standing up here if I didn't believe how important this racial equity work I beg those of you here that believe those lies that have been told about racial equity work to do a little research about systemic racism in our country. This isn't about a racist person or people. This is about racism that is built into our society. Black Americans have higher infant mortality rates, their schools have less funding, they have shorter life expectancy and more college debt. They make less money for the same job but receive harsher punishments for the same crime as their white counterparts. What in the world could possibly be wrong with working towards overcoming those inequities? I heard something said about social, emotional learning and how, let me get it right, it would have no bearing on student performance. I mean, I understand that coming from a place of privilege, but kids have social and emotional things that they have to deal with in their life, and to have that support offered by these people in this district and dedicate their lives to helping those kids through those moments? I mean, how do you expect academic achievement if you don't support them in all aspects of their life? So truly, I thank you, Fort Worth ISD, for the racial equity work you've done and encourage you to continue.
Thank you. Martina Van Norden.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm going to be honest that I prepared something for you, but after the beginning of I'm Like You, Fort Worth ISD, that was so emotional and encouraging, empowering. And so I just simply want to say to the board, please continue to do the work that you're doing. I'm not going to refute any of the things that are said that are not in truth because I respect your intelligence, I respect your due diligence, I respect your service to Fort Worth ISD. I am asking you to please continue the work, continue to move forward, continue to have conversations with the community, engaging us. I am here to say to you, I am available to do the work. I wore the shirt. Let's work. Let's get to work. Let's come together and figure out what's the best for our kids. We're not going to continue fighting this anti-CRT debate. That's not what it's about. It's about making sure that we offer the best school system and the best opportunity for education possible. It's that simple. And if we can come around the table and have dialogue that is productive, respectful, dignified, and honorable, we will see the greatness that can come out of Fort Worth ISD. We saw it this afternoon, we saw it in the beginning. It can produce what it needs to if we give it the time, the opportunity, and the respect and dignity that it needs to be able to do that. So I encourage all of you, please continue to fight, continue the work, and continue to serve with excellence. Thank you.
And Wendy Lunsford.
Good evening. At last month's board meeting, several individuals quoted Dr. King out of context and misrepresented the teachings of Jesus. Make no mistake, Dr. King lived and died for the rights of black folk, racial equity and equality. However, Texas legislators are threatening to erase from history his legacy, the Civil Rights Movement. Jesus lived and died for all of us. In John 10:10, Jesus said, "I have come that you might have life and have it more abundantly." Jesus also said in Matthew 25 and 40, "When you've provided for the least of my brothers and sisters," in this case, our students, "you've done it unto me." Dr. King said, "There is no human circumstance more tragic than the persistent existence of a harmful condition for which there is a remedy readily available." Racial equity is that remedy. Superintendent Skribner, President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and District, I pray that you continue this necessary work. Our students need it, and they deserve it. Thank you.
Wendy Lunsford will be followed by Jack Hamilton.
President, I am honored to be here today. I've been a part of leadership ISD and been learning more all the time. I go to school each and every day in life and in, in learning and wanting to know more. I do believe that we live in a world that if you want it good, you've got to want it good for all kids, no matter their skin color. I am so proud of my friends at YWLA and Hallie. I'm going to use names, I'm going sprinkles on them, but Hallie and Emily are friends of mine that have been raised in the Fort Worth School District, and I've watched their friends grow up and learn what it is to be, to be raised in a community of love and support. Not everybody has that opportunity. Not everybody has come from the same country, from the same privilege, from opportunities. I am blessed. I have won the sperm lottery to be in this country, and we need to take this opportunity to represent in our, in our beautiful, beautiful community, no matter which side of the city that you live on, no matter what side, north, south, east, or west. We need to work together as a community. I have lived in Fort Worth all of my life. I have called the mid cities Fort Worth. But what I know is that there are children that come from your district that come to my district, and it doesn't matter what color they are, they are all treated with love and respect by every educator that comes through the door. God bless our educators, our parents that care, our parents that work hard to love their children each and every day and only want the best for them. Please, please continue to do your work for my community, for your community, and for all our children.
Seven years principaling in Title I schools. And I have something, I guess this is a technical presentation tonight, and I respectfully request that the board and superintendent consider the following statements. The academic achievement scores in Fort Worth ISD are and have been embarrassing for a few years. Both reading and mathematics scores continue to decline. Fort Worth ISD is seeing declining enrollment, which is at least partially linked to the poor quality and disagreement with socially and morally objectionable agendas that have been infused by the administration. And what is taught is more important than how it is taught. Dr. Fenwick English became noteworthy several years ago when he said this very simple and obvious statement, "Students tend to do better when you teach them what they're being tested on." As the district's embarrassing test scores continue to spiral downward, I'm at a loss to rationalize how this school board can consider, if it is, and I'm not really sure if it is, taking away from the time on task for academics and replacing it with indoctrination time for critical race theory, which is really nothing more than Marxist propaganda that's been around since the 60s designed to divide, foment anarchy, and hate. The topic of curriculum, what is taught, needs to be a serious discussion among those of you who have been elected to see after the education of our children. And the important question you need to start with is, when was the last time the school district did a professional curriculum audit, followed by a curriculum alignment to scaffold the alignment of prerequisite skills and ensure those skills are being taught and assessed at a correct level of difficulty? Professional decisions regarding what is taught need to be based on data-driven, research-based data, not on emotional whims. It's obvious that the citizens here are desperate for significant changes to the curriculum. However, those changes need to be made based on data-driven decisions. It's only then that you can justify the cost, both to the district and to the students. Thank you for your time.
Ollie Spradlin. Michelle Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Hallie Spradlin. I am a recent graduate of the Fort Worth ISD, class of 2021, and I would just like to say thank you to the superintendent and the school. Having attended the fourth ISD since the fourth grade, I can attest to the fact that this district puts in the work to make sure that all students are equipped and prepared for a number of options that lead to success after graduation. Looking back on my time at Fort Worth ISD, it is more to clear than me that our district superintendent and school board members care about the kids in our community. I'm especially mindful that our school board members are not paid for their time in service. However, I know that you all work very hard to make sure that this district is the best that it can be. This past year, your job has been made especially more difficult by the pandemic. About a year ago, your meetings ran into the wears of the morning as you debated how and when to best reopen our schools. And although we did have an unconventional year... And although we did have an unconventional year, I know I'm not alone in expressing my gratitude and appreciation for the difficult and compassionate work that you have done. I also want to express your gratitude or my gratitude to your commitment to equity and excellence. I know that my educational experience was enriched by the diverse environment of the school setting. As I watch public comments from recent school board meetings, two things stood out to me. First is that our school board members do not hear enough from the people who support the work you do. Secondly, is that you certainly do not get to hear enough opportunities to hear from students, actual students that attend. I am just one voice, but I know that there are many, many students who feel as I do, that we received an excellent education in a district that champions racial equity. And as we leave school and enter a world where diversity is an everyday reality, this aspect of our education is crucial. Because of your work, we are better prepared to be citizens in our communities. So I come before you tonight simply to express my gratitude as a product of Fort Worth ISD for all the work that our teachers, administrators, and schoolroom members do, and I'm sorry, and superintendent do. So thank you all for your dedication to our school.
Michelle Sanchez and Carlos Tercios. Is Michelle Sanchez present?
No, she's not here.
Okay. Please go ahead, Mr. Tercios.
All righty. Good evening, School Board, Superintendent. My name is Carlos Tercios, and I would like to read a quote from the Star Telegram. You might be, and this is a quote from the Star Telegram. "You might be thinking about funding. According to the Texas Education Agency, Color ISD spends less per student, around $11,213, than Fort Worth ISD, and earns an A. Go Le ISD spends more than 25% more money per student and gets a C. Money is welcome, but without good leadership, all the gold in Kentucky can't do a thing. Despite Fort Worth ISD's record and standing in relation to its peers, the apologists are coming. Don't blame the district, they say. It's too complex. It's poverty. It's money, or it's systematic racism. Never mind Dallas and Houston ISD outperforming Fort Worth ISD. It is imperative to realize that ISD needs improvement. And of course, the board and the ISD is taking steps to make sure that all students, of course, have achievements and, of course, progress. And although the discussion is being done, it is important to start the conversation, a new leadership for our central administration. The superintendent has been at Fort Worth ISD since 2015 and will eventually be surpassing Melody Johnson's and Walter Dampsey's time as superintendent. If all steps are to be done, then the discussion for a new superintendent should be considered. If Dallas and Houston ISDs are beating us, then we surely need some change. Superintendents are examples for ISDs, not politicians, not ideologues, and superintendents shouldn't even be spending one second on terms such as CRT or microaggressions. Last time I checked, it doesn't help a student that has a single parent and is struggling in schools. Things that have nothing to do with student performance. And most importantly, when he stated that he supports critical race theory this March in a video in a town hall. Terms that will not be helping struggling students that we have in the ISD. I hope when y'all are discussing on bond and other projects that the ISD is planning to do, that y'all also discuss on getting a new superintendent. Because frankly, I think it's time for new leadership. I want Fort Worth ISD to succeed. I want my sister to succeed. And I want black students, Hispanic students, and every single student to succeed. And that will require new leadership. And I hope the board takes that. And I hope there's bold steps to make sure we get a brand-new superintendent. Thank you.
Our final two speakers are Kristi Beck and Alexandra Montalvo.
Hi, I am here today to bring attention to the social-emotional learning software from Rhythm Incorporated that the board members will be voting on this evening. I am asking the board to decline the approval of this software for the following reasons. First, according to the Pioneer Institute, a public policy research organization, they state, and I quote, "Social-emotional learning, or SEL, has been billed as a transformational tool that will propel students to greater academic achievement and personal fulfillment. Unfortunately, as a new Pioneer Institute study makes clear, the research evidence to back up these claims is thin and unpersuasive. Moreover, the risks SEL poses to student privacy and health are significant." End quote. Has the board done its own research on this social-emotional learning program outside of what Rhythm Incorporated has provided you with? Second, speaking of the student privacy issue, much of the monitoring that goes on with the software from companies like Rhythm occurs without the consent of children or their parents. Will the parents, families, and students be informed of this new software? Will students have the option to opt out of using the software app? Third, social-emotional learning is simply a vehicle for critical race theory. This is yet another step in analyzing the many aspects of life through the lens of race. SEL software is a way to track and analyze student data through the lens of race. I know the goal of the district of improving student achievement will not be achieved using any SEL techniques or tools. I agree with what Carol said earlier, to please get back to the basics and stop looking at different programs like this that focus on SEL to deliver that student achievement. It's not going to happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent, Board of Trustees. This has definitely been an interesting night to be able to start off with such inspiration and amazing story of overcoming the obstacles that we've seen in someone like Opalee. And just want to highlight that part of her story where she talked about even after her retirement in '77, she still saw the need to serve the inequities we see in our communities. And unfortunately, in 2021, we know that those inequities are all too real still, especially in the midst of a pandemic that we've seen really impact certain parts of our communities much more than others. It's been said already, but I just want to repeat that we know what is happening right now in Fort Worth ISD. I'm thankful for the relationship that I've been able to have with many of you through working in the school district, trying to find solutions, trying to work towards the progress we know we need in Fort Worth ISD and your commitment to that. But right now, what is happening is a political fight for the sake of power. And our district is being used as a space to try to cause division, to try to insert fear, when we know that we're here to serve these students. We're here to work together. And I want to encourage and empower all of you, as Opalee said, to work as one, not given to this fear, not given to this gaslighting, which was referenced earlier, which I think is a great term for what's happening. We have a lot of work to do. We have a huge opportunity to really serve the kids that have just all endured the impacts of what a pandemic can do, endure the impacts of what a week-long Texas freeze can do where students lost electricity. Families have had to endure a lot of different trauma over this last year and a half. And we're hoping we're going to be able to get out of it soon. I thank you for the bold moves that have happened with the boundary alignment that's happened so that we can have more pyramid synergy and we can have more leadership synergy with that. My wife got to visit Western Hills High School and the amazing improvements that have been done with the bond program and the amazing improvements happening in high schools all across Fort Worth ISD. We definitely want to keep seeing those kind of investments. We see that teachers are really feeling at odds with this profession because of how hard this last year was. And we know we need to keep amazing teachers in our classroom. Centering on these kind of fights is not going to do it. So keep doing the great work of the racial equity work you're doing and keep focusing on the investments needed in Fort Worth ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all that spoke this evening. And thanks to all of you that are in attendance tonight. We appreciate your support on behalf of our children. At this time, Lone Star Governance's quarterly board progress review is due. For us to remain in compliance, Deputy Superintendent Mullenar has agreed to cover this for us. We are missing one trustee, Trustee Ramos, whose flight was delayed. And so we've asked her to cover it, and in next meeting, we will discuss. Thank you, Ms. Mullenar.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson, President Jackson. I do want to go ahead and we can do our quarterly review for our progress, for our tracker. I'll be brief, but it is important because we are on the leaderboard for LSG. According to TA's website, we are at at our MEETS focus level with only a few other districts. And there's two districts at the master level. So we want to keep up with our work with Lone Star Governance. So this evening, I'm going to go quickly through our visions and goals. So this team member was, of course, President Jackson and Trustee Loebanos. We will be maintaining our MEET focus at 12 points. And we'll just continue to engage our community as brought up this evening, town halls and other meetings to make sure we're getting their input and our student outcome goals. Our vision and goals, number two, also led by Trustee Jackson and Trustee Loebanos, will maintain our MEETS focus at 12. Our next steps will be engaging our stakeholders through LSG advocacy teams as well as approving our monitoring reports in our calendar as we stay on schedule. And Ms. Rispe will actually touch on that this evening during her report. Our vision three, Trustee Brookins and Trustee Ramos, we will be remaining at approaches focus. We will come back together after our recommendation of, once we have our new board all together, now that we're all in place. Every two years, it is required that our board trustees go through a two-day training. So we will be planning that for all nine of our board members coming up that will participate in a two-day LSG training. And that will help us meet paths, the approaches. And at that time, we will work on our board constraints that we can vote on and get in place. Our vision four is around the superintendent's constraints. We will continue to meet focus, maintain meet focus. We will continue to engage our stakeholders through LSG as well as monitor our board monitoring calendar schedule. Our progress in accountability with Trustee Jackson and Brookins, we went from a MEETS focus to a master, so we did gain three points in that area. And that was really due to our time tracker. When we look at our meetings about staying focused on student outcomes and around student goals. So we are moving up to the masters at this time. We are averaging around 55% of our meeting, each meeting, around student outcome goals. We hope to increase that. So that is definitely, prior to that, we were averaging around 30%. So great work on that one. Our accountability and progress two is Trustee Jackson, Loebanos, and Ramos. And we will maintain our approaches points. And we will continue to use our staff tracker with that one, as well as our quarterly reports, and are looking at our constraints and our goals as well. Our structure vision around Trustee Evans and Trustee Phillips, we will maintain our MEETS focus with our 12 points. And we will continue with our tracker, monitor the agenda, how many we have on our board action items to try to do five or less. And then, of course, staff assisting as well as making sure our items or seven calendar days to our board to review and continue no edits to our board meeting agenda 72 hours prior. Our advocacy and engagement, we went from a preparing to focus to actually earning two additional points to approaches focus. And that one, we will continue to plan and conduct the two-day LSG training to include our board members. But also, how can we increase our student voice and hear from our students when we're making decisions? And then our last one is unity. We will go from a MEETS focus nine and maintain. And this one, we will consider improve the board constraints that were drafted, complete our training requirements, adhere to our board operating procedures, and then maintain 80% or higher attendance rate for our board trustees. So President Jackson and trustees, I would like to share that you went from a 72 to a, I'm sorry, from a 67 to a 72 for points. So you had an increase of five points. And next quarter, our goal is to reach 91 points. So we will come back in August and approve these quarterly progress tracker and then submit that to TEA. I think any questions or comments at this time?
Trustees, any questions for Ms. Mullenar? And next meeting, we'll have a full discussion. Thank you for covering that for us. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Scribner, who will introduce our CFO.
Actually, President Jackson, I think at this time, we're going to continue on with 5B prior to the to the report there.
End of your goals.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Karen with regard to our end-of-the-year goals, one through
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. This actually aligns with our quarterly tracker report. Our next, on our board monitoring calendar, we did move from June to July due to our extended school year. Our end-of-the-year goals, one, two, and three. And our Associate Superintendent Sarah Rispe and our Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Moore, will share with you our report for this.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenar. Happy to be here to go over our end-of-the-year information with you, board. I want to start a little ways back, though, before we look at the end of this year and remind you of where we were coming from so we can kind of bridge over to this year's results. So back last year, last school year, in the spring of 2019, prior to the pandemic, our last report, we updated the board on what we were seeing as trending in the right direction with some very positive information on our Goal One and Goal Two, early literacy and early math. We saw reading in English that spring semester go up by three points from 50 to 53%. We saw reading in Spanish go up that spring from 43 to 47%. And we saw math make a really large increase from 41 to 55%. Obviously, we did not have STAR. We had a closure after spring break, and we did not have STAR scores for that year. So we can't say that that would have carried over to STAR, but we had strong belief that we were going to see comparable increases in our STAR result for 2019, for that 2019, 2020 school year. And we also saw growth in our college career and military readiness for our seniors, another one of the goals, Goal Three. Then we had the pandemic come. We had the closure in the spring where we were working on supporting families with not only devices for students to continue to learn remotely, but food and other challenges that our families were facing. We had a late start in the school year for this past year, 2020, 21. We had change in learning environment for our children. Many children learning virtually, some in person, some hybrid. And we had kids changing during the year. So some students would come back in person, and then things would change in the community and in their family, and they would need to go virtual again. So we have kids with unfinished learning and lost learning time. And we just want to acknowledge that as that impacts some of the things that I'm going to talk to you about. During the year last year, we kept the board apprised of progress toward our goals, one, two, and three, in a variety, and you can see them there, of presentations over the year. And we want to continue to do that. The board committed and the administration agreed to transparency on continuing to discuss these results, even when sometimes they are challenging for us. And so we want to maintain that commitment tonight. I know board members have received our STAR results. You've seen them in the paper. We've had some of the speakers tonight talk about those STAR results. But I want to present them here as we think about where we're coming from and moving forward. So the results, as we're displaying them tonight, this is going to be grade three through eight results. This is mathematics that we're looking at first, starting with grade three is the top bar and going down to grade eight is the bottom bar. and going down to grade eight is the bottom bar. Red indicates the percent of students who did not pass the STAR test in spring 2021 for mathematics. And over on the right-hand side, you'll see the green numbers, which indicate the percent of students who did pass the test. That green bar is divided up into chunks of the percent who passed at approaches, who passed at MEETS, and who passed at masters. So I know that, as I presented before, you'll remember there are four possible results for a student. Either they don't pass the test, they pass at approaches, they pass at MEETS, or they pass at masters. Reading is this next slide, and this is our English reading results. And so same layout with grade three at the top. Red is not passing, and the green numbers running down the side are passing. You will see that for most grade levels, three through eight, at least 50% or more of the students passed. The highest was fifth grade with 61% passing. The lowest was sixth grade with 47% passing. And this is following the year of the closures and the changes that we have looked at. Spanish reading, we have about a third roughly of our students that test in Spanish on reading. And so those results are here for grade three, four, and five. Those are the only grades that have that opportunity to test in Spanish. So 42, 38, and again, grade five is the highest in reading at 65% of the kids who tested in Spanish passing. We also test science and social studies. Science is tested at grade five and grade eight, and so you see those two results there. And the percent passing, again, is to the right-hand column. And the bottom bar is grade eight social studies with 34% passing. You may have noticed with the math and then especially with science and social studies, there are some challenges there with lower percentages of students passing. These introduce new content each for each thing that's very content-specific. Unlike reading, where kids, once they learn to read, they just continue to get better at that and improve their reading skills. There's new content added all the time at mathematics, science, and social studies. And these are our STAR writing scores. This 2021 test was the last time that the state of Texas will test writing as a separate test. Beginning next year in 2022, writing will be embedded as a part of the reading test. So it'll become a reading, English, language arts test. They will no longer be two separate tests. And every grade level, three through eight, will have some writing components embedded within the reading test. So we'll see some changes there coming up this next school year. And finally, our end-of-course results, and these are primarily for high school, although we do have some accelerated middle school students who also take end-of-course. Top line is Algebra I. Then we have Biology, English I, English II, and US History. And for our students taking end-of-course, this is a graduation requirement, although last year, due to the pandemic, and this year again with the pandemic, the state did allow students to graduate if they could demonstrate proficiency through an individual graduation committee with a project that showed that they did understand the course content. So as we think about those results with COVID, I want to tell you that we felt good about our testing for this spring. We had a large number of students, even those who were virtual, come to school to participate in testing because we believed what the state said in February of last year, when they decided to move forward with the STAR test, that this would not necessarily be to compare to prior performance because things had been widely different and was not a normal school year. But we did need this information about students to set an equitable baseline to begin moving forward and helping our students recover some of that lost learning. In March, TEA reiterated this as we had our first rounds of testing started and said that we, districts should not, should exercise question and should not use this in isolation for evaluating or planning, but to use it with other data points to help make sure that we make the best decisions for our kids. And I included this to show you that these were not just drops in Fort Worth ISD compared to pre-pandemic, but this pattern was seen across the state. These are statewide results. So the blue line that you see, the trend line, is the trend going up overall for reading over the past few years, and then a decline following COVID. You'll also see that orange line for mathematics, and you'll notice that the decline is much greater. And again, there's a lot of new content introduced in mathematics. And so we saw this trend both across the state and nationally and result for students across the nation of that decline in mathematics. I want to turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Sarah. As Ms. Risby just shared, COVID has, COVID has had an impact on all of our students and in all of our schools. The interruptions that we've experienced have made significant impact, not just in the student achievement here in Fort Worth ISD, but it's made impact to student achievement across the state and nationally as well. The graphic that you see represented here identifies our priorities and our focus for student achievement, but more importantly, for student growth. Growth, student growth, is what leads to improved student achievement. Think about that for a minute. As Ms. Risby shared, Fort Worth ISD actually had the largest participation of students taking this year's STAR assessment, larger than any other large urban district in the state of Texas. Almost 98% of our students participated in STAR assessment this year. Why was that? Because we felt it was important to know the baseline of where our students were. We felt it was important to know what happened to our students over COVID and where do we need to start with our students to really help and support the recovery. But I will tell you, we didn't wait until STAR assessments to look at where our students are. We aren't looking at state assessment in isolation. We started looking at student assessment back in the fall of this last year when students returned from the first interruption shutdown from COVID. I'll draw your attention back to this slide here. This is a slide just as a representation of our second through eighth grade student performance in fall of 2020, the fall assessment when students first came back to us from the spring semester first shut down from COVID. We learned a lot about our students and about the impact that COVID had. This is specifically in math. Look at that graphic. 55% of Fort Worth ISD students in second through eighth grade decreased in their performance of mathematics from fall 2019 to fall 2020. That's not 55% of students that didn't increase or progress. That's 55% of our students that decreased. Similar results nationwide across the state. This is why, if you remember in January, we brought to this board our academic priority instructional plan. And we started putting actions in place in January to say, what can we do to address what's happened to our students and to get students back in our schools, back learning, and start the recovery process now? I'd like to share this graphic. This is, this is the response that we put into place. This is what we started in January when we set our expectation of staying focused on high-quality, tier-one instruction for all students, saying that this spring, we cannot go into reactive mode. We have to understand our plan. We have to stay focused on our instructional plan. And we have to make sure, regardless of what format students are receiving instruction, teachers stay with the validity of high-quality, grade-level rigorous instruction and providing the best tier-one instruction possible. Our plan was to reset. Our plan was to look at data and know where our students are, identify each student's starting point. And once we know where our students are, how do we respond to that? Our immediate response is how do we maximize instructional time? Not only look at the time that students have in front of their teacher, but look at how we provide additional instructional time for students so they have more opportunity to learn. We then look to redefine our expectations for our students. How do we set realistic goals based off of where our students are now? Realistic student expectations, but also realistic expectations for all of our schools. And then finally, how do we reinforce those expectations? That's how do we drive growth, individualized growth for every student every day? And the main approach there is how we institute our high-quality tier-one instruction with additional student supports in place to make sure students can be successful. Now, you've heard me talk several times through several presentations about staying committed to high-quality, tier-one instruction. Well, a lot of times, we need to stop and look at that and say, what is tier-one instruction? When we say high-quality, tier-one instruction, what do we really mean? This graphic will show you that instruction is not just one thing that teachers do. Tier-one instruction is our core curriculum. Tier-one instruction is the action that the teachers take with their whole class, in their classroom, to make sure that we're covering the content, the standards, the expectations that we have for learning of our students in each course at each grade level. But what we know is some students can't stop there. Some students need additional support. So we have tier-two interventions where we put students into smaller groups, where we work with students on individual needs. And we also know that as a tier-three intervention, we have students that may need some individual attention. We may need to provide some additional support individually for each student. That's the differentiation of instruction that takes place in the classroom. This is the area where our teachers are really expert in what they do, knowing their students, knowing where they are, and providing the support that they need. We want to ensure that all of our instruction ensures that students are getting the support that they need to accelerate student learning, not to remediate student learning. I want to restate that. Our goal is to accelerate student learning, not to remediate. If we don't expose our students to the content that they need to have this year, this coming year, this next year, so that they can meet the standards of the grade level that they're in, we're never going to be able to not just catch students up, but to accelerate students so that we get back to the levels of achievement that we expect. So how are we accelerating student learning? We're fortunate that we've already put in place multiple strategies that are showing positive results. We've seen those results, and I'll share some of those with you from this past spring. The first approach that we put into play is looking at defining instruction in Fort Worth ISD. We put together an instructional framework, a literacy and biliteracy framework, and a curriculum framework. So if there is a standard definition of what does instruction, what does high-quality instruction in Fort Worth ISD schools look like, regardless of what school, what classroom, what grade level you enter, the frameworks provide a common definition of what quality instruction looks like in Fort Worth ISD. And they also serve as a guide for our teachers, for all teachers, to use when planning and developing lessons for our students. We also have looked at differentiated supports for our students. No one student, no one school, no one school district has experienced COVID and this experience the same way. Therefore, we need to meet the needs of each individual student, each individual school, each individual region, each individual pyramid, where they are. We have to differentiate what we're providing to those students. In Fort Worth ISD, we didn't wait until STAR assessment at the end of last year to say where are our students and how do we, how do we respond to what our data tells us? We started that based off of our MAP data, based off of our formative assessments, our progress monitoring assessment. And we made a change this last spring to say, how do we make sure we work with students to recover from that 55% that regressed during COVID shutdown? Other strategies that we put into place are not just, not just academic. It's also supporting the whole student. It's supporting the school experience for all of our learners. It is social, emotional learning. It is making sure that our students are ready to learn in the classroom. Doesn't matter what we teach them if students aren't ready to receive the instruction we have. So how can we support our teachers and our students to be ready for the learning that needs to take place in our classroom? How do we support our parents? How do we provide wraparound services? How do we put that parent partnership place into play in our schools so that parents are a part of the solution to really make sure students can achieve at high levels? At the high school level, we've been purposeful about students entering our high schools, our freshman on track, our freshman success initiative. How do we make sure we have a plan to know every freshman when they enter our high schools and make sure that we know that they're on track when they get to us and that they stay on track, not just their first year in school, but all the way through their senior year, so that we're graduating students on time and we're graduating students that are ready for the workforce, for college, for career, for what the next step is in their schooling experience? We're moving forward with more high-quality tutoring experiences for our students. How do we increase instructional time before school, after school? Have tutoring that meets the individual needs of students. And then with that, how do we increase learning opportunity? That's, that's the experience we had with summer with the greater-than-expected attendance in summer school, with our after-school programming that we will expand next year, as well as our Saturday Quest activities that we will do for our elementary students to provide increased learning opportunities. Now, you've heard me say that we saw signs or our students trending in the right direction this last spring. This is the data I'd like to share with you that says evidence that our students are responding to our instructional programs and are trending in the right direction. This is a quick overview of our MAP data that gauges student growth from middle of the year to the end of this last school year. So this is 2021, from when we administered middle-of-year assessment in January to when we administered end-of-year assessment in May. I'm going to share with you first math. I'll share with you math and reading so that you can see the growth at each of the individual grade levels. Remember, MAP assessment is administered kindergarten through eighth grade. Just real quick, so that you can read the graphic, what this graphic represents. The orange diamond that you see there is the national norm that's set for this period of time for growth that students should experience between middle of year and end of last, end of the school year. Now, remember, national norms are not set during a pandemic time. They are set to a traditional school year. So this is expected growth for students that would be in a classroom, learning in a traditional setting, having the supports that are in place. The orange diamond represents what national norms tell us. This is how students should improve over this time. The bluish bar that you see there actually shows you the growth that Fort Worth ISD students experienced from January to May this last school year. Anywhere on that graphic that you see that blue bar higher than the orange diamond tells us that Fort Worth ISD students performed at higher levels of growth than what national norms told us we should expect. So when you look at this graphic for math from this last year, from the spring semester when we put our intervention and our response plan in place, you see in multiple grade levels at elementary, as well as in middle school, our students outperformed their growth expectation and performed better than what national norms told us they would. When you look at language arts, when you look at reading scores here, this is an area where we were very purposeful about our elementary literacy program, and you will see similar results if you look at those orange bars in our elementary grade levels. You see student perform, student growth outperforming what our national norms told us would be traditional in a traditional school year. So what did we do, and how are we expanding what we did? Well, this past spring at an elementary, we provided a pilot to 32 elementary schools, a literacy intervention called Lexia Core 5. In the 32 elementary schools, we provided this program, and we had over 10,000 students participate. And of those 10,000 students who participated in this intervention, 46% of our students achieved at least one grade level of growth. Now, you may listen to that and say, that's less than half of our students that achieved one grade level of growth? But remember what I said, this was our spring intervention. We instituted this intervention in February. So from February to May, almost half of the students in this pilot grew at least one year of growth in four months. Data that told us students responded to the instruction and the resources we provided. Now, in addition to that, we looked at how often students use the program. And students that use the program at greater rates than average, we had 58% of our students that used the program at greater rates than average that actually advanced greater than one grade level. Areas that showed us that our literacy plan, our literacy framework, our literacy interventions are working and that we need to expand. This year, we are expanding this program to all elementary schools, not just the pilot of 32. All students will benefit from our literacy framework and supporting interventions. We didn't just intervene at the elementary level. We also intervened at the middle school level. We provided a structured literacy and enhanced math program for students in sixth and seventh grade, students in literacy and math who were performing at the lowest quartile of performance according to our math results, actually, students that were performing between the 15th and 25th percentile. We double-blocked these students so they received their core instruction as well as an intervention time that had specific interventions in place that their same teacher that taught their core instruction was working to provide additional instruction in literacy or math. We saw positive results of our students in sixth and seventh grade in literacy and math that were enrolled in this program. With ESSR funding, we actually put FTEs back in place at all of our middle schools to increase the number of seats and structured literacy and enhanced math that our students will participate in this last, this next year. We share these as just an example of how we're responding to our data, how we weren't waiting for STAR assessment, but how we're going to continue to provide these supports for our students moving forward and next. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Risby so she can talk to you in more detail about our end-of-year goals, Lone Star Governance board goal.
Can we pause for one moment? We have three trustees on the board that would like to ask questions. And this is comprehensive, and I know you all live this. But it would be good if we could get the questions now and then proceed, if it's okay with you. Thank you so much. Trustee CJ. Trustee CJ Evans.
Thank you so much for this. My question is on the math scores. Slide five. It's my understanding that our accelerated sixth-grade math students are still taking the eighth-grade STAR in math. And I just wonder, I know it's, I think it was trustee Dar who brought this up in the past, but can that be addressed? Or they take their own grade STAR? Or is this a state requirement?
Yeah, that's a great question, trustee Evans. The requirement is a student has to take the assessment of the state standards in which they complete that school year. If a student has completed all of their eighth-grade standards, they have to take the eighth-grade assessment the year that they complete instruction in all of those eighth grades. Our accelerated program does not complete all of eighth grade the previous year, so some of those accelerated programs are required to take that assessment. Mrs. Arisby, do you have anything you wouldn't want to add to that?
Yes, thank you. The students that are in algebra in middle school, they take the algebra test. So if we have a seventh grader that completes the algebra curriculum, they take that at seventh grade. If they do it at eighth grade, they take it at eighth grade. I think those students may be referred to. Trustee Evans, are those students, we've got some seventh graders that take Algebra I. And then in eighth grade, there is a state requirement that they take a test. And so if they've gone on into geometry, there is no test for geometry at middle school. They have to take the eighth-grade test. It's not a large number of students, but it does feel like a bit of a disconnect. It's a state requirement, and it's part of the federal requirement.
All good. Trustee Luwai Benos.
Thank you, President Jefferson. Thank you for this report. So on the same slide, slide six on my page about the math. So seventh-grade math is like the one with the highest percentage of failure. What do we have in place going forward to help the students in math from three, four, five, six, seven, and eight? I know seven is the one that maybe is math with the highest percentage. I know you mentioned the double, the two classes, but that wasn't already in the spring of this year, right? Or is it coming up in the fall?
Both. We did start the enhanced math class. We restructured that this last year, though. Enhanced math previously was a double block where we didn't really have solid guidance on how that worked. We went back and redefined what the enhanced math class looked like to where the teacher that is providing the core instruction is also the same teacher that's providing intervention. And we put some additional interventions in place for that specific period of time. At that time, we didn't have a good, solid curriculum for what happens in the second block of instruction. One of the things that we've done to connect our progress monitoring tools, our MAP assessment, is we have, you've heard us talk about MY PATH before, how we have that system that helps teachers identify a pathway of areas of instruction that students need more assistance in. We use that as part of our math resource in that intervention class so that teachers can expand those areas that students that are performing at that lower quartile are demonstrating they need additional help. So we build those individual pathways for students. We feel like now that we have the redefinition and the curriculum setup for both of the blocks, that that's going to be more beneficial for our students. That's why we actually, at December, at semester, we redid master schedules at middle schools to put that expectation in place. And so we now have the system in place now, and we'll see that really enhance what's happening with students.
Thank you. And on slide eight, they're reading in Spanish. Do we have the same kind of process in place to help the students avoid a 62% failing for grade?
Yeah. So a couple of things that we've done when you're speaking specifically about our Spanish reading scores. We've been purposeful about adding additional program interventions in place for our Spanish language learners, our Spanish testers as well. If you will remember, this board approved Esperanza and Estreitas, which are both reading interventions, additional supports for our students, will help with phonics and basic reading ability, as well as comprehension for our students. So we have new resources that will be in place this year. We've actually worked on our new literacy, our biliteracy framework. So we have, we started the process last semester to work with all of our bilingual teachers to redefine the expectation of instruction in dual-language classrooms. So we really are enhancing the supports that we have in place, not only for our students, but for our teachers to deliver quality instruction in those environments as well.
And on the next one, science and social studies or scores are still over 50% of students pre-ident and failing. So do we have another system in place to help the students?
So I'll speak what our preliminary review of our student performance is right now. And really, what this goes back to is the infrequency that the state assesses science and social studies. And really, looking at science being so, science and social studies both being so content-driven that we have to have quality instruction on a regular basis. We're looking at our elementary scheduling. We started this conversation last year where the expectation, a part of the scheduling drivers at elementary, is that science and social studies instruction will happen every day. In the past, students have not been exposed to science and social studies instruction on a daily basis. So that's part of our instructional framework that we put out, as well as part of our literacy framework when we talk about disciplinary literacy and how we're supporting understanding the concepts in science and social studies and understanding the literacy piece of being able to think like a scientist and think like a historian. We're really going to have some additional improvements in place for daily instruction at the elementary levels that will translate into greater performance for our students. And we will be monitoring the growth of those.
If I may, trustee Luwai Benos. The other piece, too, with regard to what major programmatic change we will have moving forward is in-person instruction. Last year, we saw that about half of our students chose online virtual instruction. And not only in Fort Worth, not only across North Texas, but across the entire state, those students, particularly low-income students, who learned at home, online, virtually, scored dramatically lower than those school students who were in person. So moving forward, I think that's going to be one of the things that you're going to see a great difference. And of course, that is why the TEA exercises caution as we use these outcomes for planning and evaluating purposes. I think we're going to see a dramatic increase. The other piece, too, is, I think Mr. Moore pointed out, we really made a concerted effort to have everyone come to school and take the test. Some of our other large urban districts didn't do that. We wanted to have an accurate and good baseline, irrespective of what the outcomes would, what we expected the outcomes to be. We knew that those students who were learning virtually, particularly in our case, 85% of our students living at or below the federal poverty line, them coming to school to take the test, we knew that their scores were not going to be as high as those in person. So two things, in-person instruction, as well as the curriculum and instructional focus that Mr. Moore is talking about. In fact, tomorrow morning, we'll be addressing all of our principals with regard to a follow-up on this conversation, several others with regard to the implementation of next year's plan.
I thank you for encouraging our students to come back and take that test. That really gives you a foundation on where we are and what do we need to do going forward. Especially to the one with the diamonds. So even though on some of our, the blue graph, we are above the diamond national level, but on our STAR test, we still score 50% or higher on failing. Is that a correlation?
So, and Sarah, you may want to add to this as well. I'd like to draw your attention back to what this information tells us. Remember, this is our MAP growth from middle of year to end of the year. This is not necessarily telling us how our students perform. What this data is telling us is that for the second semester, when we really said, let's put our instructional priorities in place, let's put a focus on really making sure we start the recovery process for students now, students responded to that plan. Students grew from where they were in January to where we expected them to be. They outgrew what we were expecting them to do for the spring semester. We still have work that we need to do on their achievement. So we still have areas that we will continue to focus here. But go back to that first graphic that I showed you. The way that we improve student achievement is you have to take students from where they are and grow students. And you have to look at where they're at and continue to grow their knowledge and their skill each day, each grade level. This recovery is not going to be a one-year, we got kids back, and we've got it now. It's going to be based in how we grow students, how we accelerate learning, and how we continue to grow on what those experiences and that instructional opportunity is in the classroom. What we want to see every time we administer this MAP growth assessment is that we continue to be above that national norm expectation because that tells us students are growing at higher rates than they would.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And trustee Brookins is the final question.
Okay. I just want to commend you on putting all of these extra ways to help our students to increase their academic performance. We know that all of our students don't all learn at the same pace. But you putting these things in place, I know that we'll be able to see some increase. My first question is, I only have two, so. When you determine our students based on their tiers, how, actually, how does that process work? So does everybody go in at tier one, and then you are able to figure out who goes to tier two and then tier three? And then the second part of the question is, where does the tier two and three learning or additional instruction take place? Is it in this classroom? Or do you take them out and do it separately?
It's a great question. And it's hard to answer that because really, the way that it works is it's individualized. Really, the guide for tier one, two, and three instruction is the teacher, the person who is in the classroom with the student on a daily basis to know how that student is performing. Tier one instruction is what, so think about the lesson plan that the teacher puts together, the curriculum we have in place. Tier one is that teacher delivering, here's what I need to cover with my students today. And then the teacher is monitoring, how did my students do with, how successful were my students with what I taught them today? Are there some students that didn't get what I was wanting to teach them? I need to pull them in a small group and reinforce and reteach and do that. I may do that during part of my time in my classroom. But then there may be other students that even after I do that, they need a little bit more. That may happen in tutoring. That may be happening in what we do before or after school. That may be happening in a pull-out program for students at different times in the school. Those are kind of the interventions and supports that the school puts in place. And through professional learning communities at the campus, the principal is leading the teachers to look at, what do we need to do for each individual student to make sure they're mastering the skills that we need them to have?
And my second question is, I'm excited to see that we're putting in the high-quality tutoring. My question is, is that tutoring before, after school? And you kind of answered that with your answer you just did. But also, with our partners that we're bringing in, are they being trained on how to tutor our students? Or are making sure they're on the same quality level that we expect from our tutoring in school?
Great question. So one of the things that we're committed to with our additional tutoring program is to really bring in experts that have a proven track record of working with students, knowing the state standards here in Texas, and getting results from working with small groups and even individualized students. What we didn't want to do is put something more on our teachers this year. We really want our teachers to concentrate on high-quality tier-one instruction, what you're doing in your classroom to make sure that they can focus on that expectation. They've been pulled in so many different directions the last couple of years. We're in the process right now of looking for partners. We've got an RFP that's going out. We'll evaluate that based on the criteria that says, do you understand our instructional framework? What is your curriculum that you have in place? How do you align with the state standards? What type of results are you getting across the state or outside of the state as well? So we'll be measuring all of that before we select anyone that we would like to partner with for tutoring.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Sarah, ready?
All right. Board, I know that you received the presentation in advance, so we're going to go through the goals. And I'm going to go fairly quickly. I'm not, I don't want to rush you, so certainly either stop me or ask questions at the end. But I don't want to also read to you. So goal one, early literacy. Your outcome goal here is for grade-three students on the STAR test to score at meets grade level or above. You see that for the three years prior to the pandemic, we had a percentage around 34% to 35% each year. The board set goals for us beginning in 2020, although we did not test. And in 2021, the test that we just took following the pandemic, we set a new baseline at 26%. You'll also notice that we have not altered, short of guidance from the board, our goals for the future years. That is why we're leaning into our MAP data, and we believe that our students can come back, and we can get them back on track and surpass on some of these goals so that we're still working toward those goals. This is that same information by student group for each of the student groups by race, ethnicity, as well as special programs. For goal progress measure 1.1, this is our circle data. It's the data for students in pre-K on reading and phonological awareness. We set our baseline on 2019 at 80%. We did not have STAR or the end-of-year measures for Circle and Tekske and other things in 2020. So we measured again this year at the end of year, and we're at 78%. So there is a slight decrease there, but you do not see quite the decrease in pre-K. So that's really nice to see that the pre-K students were coming in and not significantly behind where they were. Here is the same information by student group, and you see some fairly comparable information across groups there. This just reminds you what the students are tested on, what's included in that phonological awareness, different skills. Goal progress measure 1.2 is MAP reading fluency. This is the MAP test that specifically focuses on fluency. The kids wear little headsets, and they listen, and they speak. And we measured their fluency in that way. We started reading MAP fluency in 2020, 2019 school year. That 39 that we set the baseline on was a projection from middle of the year since we didn't have an end-of-year, so we did an estimate and set the goals from there. And you see that we exceeded the goal this year. So the kids coming back in person and being able to be assessed had gained fluency. And we're happy to see that, as that is one of the basics for reading as we move on up. This is that same information again by student group. Then our third goal progress measure 1.3 is MAP growth in reading. 2021 was our baseline year for MAP reading. We had been using the MAP in mathematics for a few years. The board supported adding the reading, so this plan was already in place before we closed for the pandemic. And so we're happy that we have this. We had our first score this year at 36%. And that's of students meeting or exceeding their projected growth at end of year. And we're planning to move up from there and hopefully even exceed these targets based on that spring data that we just saw. This is the same data by student group. And then we'll move to goal two, which is early mathematics. Early mathematics is for third-grade reading, sorry, third-grade mathematics based on STAR at the meets grade level or above. Again, we were hovering around 33%, 34% pre-pandemic. And we have a new baseline at 17%. That's a big drop. That is similar to what we saw at the state level, the big drop in mathematics and what MAPs on nationally across districts. So not just in Texas, but that decline in mathematics. This is definitely an area of concern for us, the mathematics, and we will be focusing carefully on mathematics with additional supports Mr. Moore spoke about. This concern is especially great for us with our African American students who are already performing lower, and the decline hit them well. Circle and Tekskey, the pre-K and K assessments also have a math component. You see the data there before the break in 2020. Right now, our pre-K and K students were at 67%. And again, we expect that to come back up. This was heavily influenced by the kindergarten scores. And those kindergartners, remember, did not get a full year of pre-K the year before. So we think that with everybody back in person, as Dr. Scribner said, we should see this rebound for the mathematics in those very early learners. This is the same information by student group. And these are the concepts that are assessed in pre-K and K, and they're very comparable. For MAP growth in mathematics, grades one through three, you see our data pre-pandemic there. And then our new baseline is at 48% for grades one through three in mathematics. Again, we saw that accelerate in the spring and expect to increase that growth for next year. Here is that same data by student group. Math mathematics, MAP assessment for kindergarten, this was our baseline year. So previously, we did not have kindergartners testing in mathematics. But when we added the reading this year, we also rounded out and gave our KinderMath for the first time. Their baseline then is 37% this year, and we expect increases in the percent of students meeting or exceeding their projected growth. And as Mr. Moore pointed out multiple times, that exceeding is very important to us because as students come from behind, we really want to see more and more students exceeding because they will eventually hit those. This is that same information by student group for mathematics. And then finally, goal three is our career, college career and military readiness goal. We start off by the percentage of students who graduate with at least one college career or military readiness indicator. And the indicators are listed there. We have seen steady increases in this, and we had an increase and actually exceeded our target despite COVID intervention. So we feel really proud of that for our graduates to continue to increase that. We know that that's a result of hard work at our high schools by our high school teachers and principals and leading our students to be sure that they meet these measures that prepare them to go on for success after they leave. This is that same information by student group. Goal progress measure 3.1 is our 12th grade. So we don't just wait to see who hits CCMR when they graduate. We're tracking that from ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. And we saw that go up with our class this year as well and exceeded the target. This is by student group again. Our ninth grade on track, 3.2, definitely declined from last year. We did have that emergency pass fail grading guidelines in the spring of 1920. Because of the pandemic, we believe that that's a part of the reason for that decline. The other part of the reason for that decline, though, is the different learning environment. As Dr. Scribner indicated, many children who were learning virtually or the hybrid and were not in school as much struggled to pass their classes. And this ninth grade on track requires for a student to count as on track that they earn at least six credits and fail no more than one semester of a court board. So we'll be watching that to rebound as we have students back in person. We expect that it will. This is that same information by student group again. Then we have our algebra one completion. Just for space on the slide, you only have one dot in pre-pandemic. But we have been up in the high 80, high to mid 80s for quite some time with algebra. We had students scoring at a 51 this year, but we expect that to rebound because we have been very consistently high in our algebra performance. And we believe, again, this is a result of virtual instruction and students not being able to get everything that. This is the information by student group for 3.3. And finally, goal progress measure 3.4. This is the percent of graduates who meet the criteria on SAT or ACT. And we want that to increase. It did not increase this year, but it did maintain. Given the pandemic and the lack of testing opportunities that a college board canceled some of the testing as as did ACT. So students did not have as many opportunities to take the test, although we did give it in the school day. But we we think that this is good to maintain and expect to be able to go back up once we have all our kids in and they have all their testing. And again, here's that information by student. That's the quick run through of the goals and happy to answer any questions on any of those slides.
Thank you so much, and you have questions from trustee Ann Dar.
Thank you, President Jackson. Thank you for this lengthy yet comprehensive report. I appreciate that. I tend to be fairly data driven, and I appreciate the amount of data that you've included. But I also have grown weary of reducing our children to simply a number on a test that is taken on one morning in a two hour period. And I recognize the importance of that test, but I refuse to encapsulate all of their worth in that one number. And I also refuse to encapsulate all of the district's work in that one number because I have been that teacher that labored over not the students that passed the test, but the students who didn't. And we have talked repeatedly, I mean, all year, about how hard our teachers have been working. And I want them to know that we see them, and our I, we'll use an I statement, I see them. I know that they have worked hard, and I know that their hearts break over the students that did not pass this test or did not perform to the state standard. So let's look at some other numbers. First of all, kudos for the 98 participation rate. And the fact that we have the highest participation rate in Texas as far as urban school districts are concerned is very telling. And that tells me that it was more important to Fort Worth ISD that we get the baseline data on these students so that we know where they are and where they need to perform than the optics of what it might look like when we get the results back or how we might compare to other districts. Because really, can we compare what Fort Worth ISD has done if we had 48% of our students learning virtually and yet 98% of our students taking the test? So you're not comparing apples to apples if we're trying to compare school districts. That's an unfair comparison, and that's unfair to our teachers, and it's unfair to our students. And if you'll allow me a little privilege, Dr. Scribner, I'm going to put you on the spot for just a minute, and I hope you don't mind. And so I know that that I'm putting you on the spot. But but again, let's look at some other numbers in the district, especially knowing that we are not tasked with just educating the academic portion of a child. That's certainly very important, and I will always stand by that. But we have to educate the whole child. And if we're not educating the whole child, then we're not meeting the needs of our community. So about just an estimate, how many free meals did we serve this school year as we were dealing with the pandemic?
That's a that's a great question. So we serve, as I said, approximately a little less than 80,000 students. 85% of those students qualify for free and reduced lunch based on their families, family income. So we served over 3 million, we served two meals, breakfast and lunch. 3 million, 3.2 million breakfasts and 4.3 million lunch. So over seven and a half million meals that we provided for our for our students. And we know that many families, particularly during the stay at home order, when we would have drive, drive through meal delivery, our families would come to specific sites, I think we had 18 sites, and we were providing meals through the entire weekend because with with parents also not working, it was it was terribly difficult for for many of our families. And 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 it was it was a blessing for us to be able to 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 provide food for the family, not only during the school day, but but also through the weekend.
That's impressive. Did the referrals for social and emotional learning support, recognizing that social and emotional learning is federally mandated? This is not a Fort Worth ISD idea. This is not something that we just think is the next great thing. It is something that is federally mandated. Did the referrals for social and emotional learning support increase or decrease this last year?
Due to the fact that we had about half of our students participating in school virtually, we did see, we did see a decrease. However, that's not to say that that it did not go away. We had 3,700 parents request contact from counselors. Nurses were also essential in supporting our families. I think one of the speakers talked about our teachers and our support staff as essential workers, and they absolutely were. In fact, that was one of the reasons that that I reached out and wrote wrote the governor and and asked that Governor Abbott consider teachers as essential and and toward the front of the line when when vaccinations did 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 arrive. And we were very pleased when when that did happen. But we had over 6,000 both parent contact with counselors and nurse contact. And there was some trauma support as well, some very significant and and serious issues. We had consultations through as a result of death, death in the family, and in some cases tragically death student.
And this summer, during the summer launch program, about how many students are being served in the summer launch program?
Well, we actually tripled our number. Typically, we have about 5,000 students participating in summer school. This year, we made it very, very clear to our community that irrespective of of student pass pass rates or student student achievement, typically, summer has, summer school has a stigma for those students who are behind, the students who failed the class. This year, summer school was for everyone. So we actually went from 5,000 students to 15,000 students, ultimately, about 11,400 who came throughout the period on a regular basis throughout that month. So we're very pleased. And and again, I think to trustee Luevanos's point earlier that that we did see a great deal of energy around families and students wanting to come back to school. We're really going to have to work very hard. And some of the points that were made earlier about students with preexisting conditions or a serious medical fragility in the in the family, we're going to have to be creative there. But but we do want our students in person because we think that's the best place for them to learn. And we really can can see the state of Texas saw a dramatic drop, as did we as a result of 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 the COVID year. And again, and and the those data are are our new baseline. But I think we're going to be very, very encouraged when when with the focus and the instructional focus on on primary tier one instruction because we can't remediate our our way out of this. You have to have solid instruction principles in the classrooms, principals knowing the 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 curriculum and providing support. We're going to see, I think, a nice rebound. But also to Mr. Moore's point, it's not going to take, it's going to take longer than just one year to get back on the on the proper trajectory, and we're we're prepared to do that.
And then one last question that I already know the answer to. Last fall, our mission was to open schools and keep them open. How many schools had to close in Fort Worth ISD?
Zero. We had zero of our 146 campuses, we had to close zero schools. We did, our our staff and and student support services staff did a great job with with contact tracing and social distancing and masks. That we did have confirmed cases, but we were very quick to to react and and did not see the the spread. In fact, the community spread that we saw out across Fort Worth was not reflected in our schools. And we hope that that is the case this fall. We're going to be very, very diligent because we know that with the new strain and 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 the parental choice to whether or not students wear masks. And that's something that we need to explore. While 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 school districts and government cannot force masks, the governor did did indicate that if parents choose to have their their students wear masks, that we certainly can facilitate that. And and I know that there are times flying on an airplane or or going to the public restroom or other places that that wearing a mask is is advisable.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me put my pitch on the call.
No, thank you.
Just a final comment. I I I want to be on the record saying that our STAR scores are important. We have to do better. Because what what we see in these results is not what we need for our community or for our school. And I know I'm preaching to the choir when I look at the the seats at this table right here. But but it is not a total picture of what is happening in Fort Worth ISD. It's not a total picture of what's happening in any district in the state of Texas. There are other very important aspects of educating children that are not reflected in those scores. Needless to say, we must do better, and we can do better. And I appreciate the plan that's been put into place to make sure that our children are getting the best education that they can. Thank you.
Oh, lucky you, me too. It happened earlier. Please go ahead, trustee Martinez.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just echo what trustee Dar said. Looking over the report and the data, I, the data continues to show that students of color and economically disadvantaged students were obviously significantly impacted during the pandemic. And COVID is not going away. Although I'm very optimistic about students returning in person, we're already seeing, you know, a spike in some communities, and particularly communities of color and economically disadvantaged areas. So when we talk about the wraparound services and the plan that we have in place moving forward, what exactly does that entail? And what exactly do we have in place for those students who may continue to be significantly impacted into through the fall?
Trustee Martinez, thank you. First, I would like to share, not only with our board, but with our stakeholders who are watching this evening, that we are updating our COVID protocols, and that will be released next week and writing on our webpage and updating them and making sure. We want to ensure our parents and our teachers and our students that we are coming back to school in person, but safely. So we are going to have that document ready in English and Spanish next week to be able to share. And we appreciate the feedback. I've gotten emails with recommendations from parents, and I really do appreciate that because having their lens and their suggestions also help us. But are we have a, just like for tutoring, we have RFP that is out currently around wraparound services. We have also increased our intervention specialists or restorative practice specialists as well. We are looking at also not just academic needs, but that social emotional need. And the wraparound services, we we would like them to come and help our students so our counselors can keep doing their school counseling, our interventionists can still work. However, we know our students are going to have even greater needs. One of the things we don't know is what all those needs are going to entail. We can guess by the surveys that we have put out, and our parents have been fantastic about giving us the feedback on those surveys and actually asking for our counselors to, our nurses to reach out to them. But having the wraparound services and being able to utilize our partners in our city to help us through this, that's also going to be able to help accelerate them to get to different resources quicker. When you bring in those wraparound services, it's not just a referral because they are the people who are doing, who the referrals go to. So we're very excited about increasing and expediting the need for our students. And we also have, it's actually on your board agenda this evening, Care Solus, who will connect our parents to actual social emotional doctors as well as pediatricians. But what we love about this type of service is that someone can say, I want a female doctor who speaks Spanish, and they find them for them. So many times, our parents just are referred or don't have a choice on their family doctor, pediatrician, or other type of physician. Everyone should have a choice regardless. What do they feel most comfortable with? And who do they want to send their child to? And what ZIP code do they want to send their child to, a pediatrician or a doctor? So we're very, and it's not just for our students. Our parents can call, and they also can get connected. So we're we're really trying to expand. I know we had one speaker who talked about an app. But for us, we have it on the board agenda because we believe in that app. That's when a student can go walk into a classroom, and they can tell their teacher right away, thumbs up, thumbs down, how am I feeling? You know what? How powerful is that to know how your students is feeling? What happens from when they leave that door of their house to when they walk into that door of that school? Now it's our turn to take care of them. We've got to reset them. We've got to get them focused. We've got to engage them. We don't know what they just went through. So we want to know if it's a thumbs down, are they hungry? Did something happen at home? You know, did, were they, was there an argument with their brother on the way to school? And now they don't know if their brother's going to pick them back up from the middle school to walk them home? You know, all of us who've been in the schools know how that impacts the little one. So we want to make sure we're able to respond very quickly. So our our resources are really, when we say wraparound, we truly mean wraparound. It's going to be people, it's going to be services, it's going to be referrals, it's going to be apps. And there's going to be something out there we haven't thought of. But that's like the best things with SRF funding. We have three years. We have not even probably touched on a few things that we need to put in place. But the best thing is, is that we are going to have the funding to do that when we find the need.
Thank you. Final question, trustee Quentin Phillips.
Thank you, President Jackson. So yeah, y'all know what these presentations do to me. Oh man. So I don't even know there's a question in this per se, other than commentary. You know, one, I appreciate trustee Dar, your line of questioning. Because whether it was your intent or not, I think what occurred from that was to be able to see some of the positive aspects of what has been occurring within a district. And I don't think that those things are highlighted nearly enough, at least not in the circles that I'm in, particularly as a trustee. You know, I know many of my colleagues will say the same. We hear so much of the negative aspect of what we need to be doing, what's not happening right. And so, you know, even just trustee, you're asking those questions and the responses, at least of my liking, were highlighting that there's been some pretty phenomenal things happening as, as far as how we've stepped up as a district, how you, Dr. Scribner, how you as administrators have really tackled problems that was way outside of reading, writing, and math. And so I'm very grateful for that. And I hope the public is able to see how much we care about the humanity of our students in our community. And I think you're a lot of questioning to highlight that, trustee Dar. And along with that being said, I hope that we can just very blatantly say, those star scores were absolutely unacceptable at every level. Like there is not sugarcoating that can really happen to that. Yes, I am very pleased that we led the state in number of entries of test takers. But where we are as far as what those scores indicated is horrible. And completely understanding all the things that went into play and what we said, right? As far as the unprecedented time period we've been in, as far as what a pandemic can do, as far as what those socioeconomic status and everything else that came into play to make those numbers what they are. But they are what they are. And I think it behooves us. And, and I think you all have been doing a really great job. I'm not attempting to run from that, that it's really unacceptable in every way. So with that, with that being said, you know, when I start thinking about what the solutions are to that, I think that we have the solutions. That's the beautiful part about this whole thing. That's kind of been my little message in the community of grace, right? That we really have been, it's been this tumultuous time period in which none of us have known how to navigate, including you, Dr. Scribner, as the superintendent, you, you never knew in a million years that you'd be dealing with a pandemic or flooding buildings and a freeze and some of everything else that we've had to go through during this time period. So preaching that message of grace that we're navigating those things. But with that being said, now it is showing proof time, right? Even said earlier, oh, it might take a little more than a year to get, it can't take more than a year. Not to show the progress that we need to show, understanding we can't get to our ultimate goal of numbers within one year. But we can put a great dent in what it looks like, showing that we really are putting forth the best efforts possible over the course of the year to be able to show what growth looks like. Our students are performing at a much higher level. And biggest thing is how we're leading the state and the country. Because I firmly believe that we have what it takes to be able to do so. So when we start thinking about what it would take for us to be leaders and it's supposed to be able to turn the ship in the right direction, plus to be able to get students on level. A lot of times, the first thing is money. Well, we got to be able to have money do the things. Well, money is here now. All right. Understand it's not infinite, that runs out too. But money is not the object that it once was. We now have money, right? You're going to need board support. And I can't speak for every one of my colleagues or how they would speak or how they would vote, but I'm pretty confident that you have the board support you're going to need. Be able to implement the things that you feel are necessary. And then we're going to need expertise. And unless y'all got me fooled, I really feel like we have some phenomenal people in these positions that have expertise about what it is that we need in order to get this job done. So I guess with that being said, if there's anything that we don't have, I really do ask that, starting with you, Dr. Scribner, and then of course to the administrative team, if there's anything that we don't have that we would need in order to be able to turn this thing in the right direction and get the results we're looking for, please don't remain silent on that. Not that you have in the past, but I'm asking even more so. Be bold, talk, let us know what those things may be. So whether it be something we can do as a governing body, whether it be something we can do as, as a community, as parents, whatever those things might be, that we actually have your back and support you in those efforts. Because this just simply cannot go on. And so I really do think that it's about moving forward from now. Because now, hopefully, everything's, you know, everything goes according to plan, we'll be back in the building and all. We'll have a full year of in-person instruction. We'll have people in different positions that are going to be able to thrive and do the job that they've been in those positions to be able to do. And so I don't want to look up this time next year and be trailing Houston or Dallas or San Antonio on anything, because we have everything we need here in order to be ahead of the curve, in order to be ahead of them in every way. So I guess it's just my, I guess more than admonishing anyone, it's just the encouragement of just saying that we can do this. Because that student recovery plan that y'all presented with those extra funds, in my short time as being a board trustee, it's one of the most impressive things I've ever seen. I mean, it really was comprehensive. It really does show that you heard the community, you heard the professionals in our buildings, you lent your own expertise to what these things need to be in order for us to get right. And I really do think that if now with proper execution of the exact plan you've already said we have, that we will get the results we're looking for. We just have to execute that now. So whatever barrier keeps us from executing, that's why I need y'all to scream loud and proud and let us know that we can eliminate, eliminate all those barriers. So we don't look back this time next year and have any excuse as to why we're not leading in what learning recovery looks like. Yes, we have to dig out of a hole. We're going to admit that openly. Yes, these scores are whack, right? And this time next year, we should be sitting here celebrating the progress that we made because we have everything we need to do so. So I guess it's just my encouragement.
Trustee Brinkin.
Yes, I just had one last comment. I just wanted to know, how often will we be able to see that we're starting to get some good results in? Or how often will we know that what you, what you've put in place is working? Instead of waiting until six months from now and it's not working, then we're like, oh, we should have pulled it three months ago. Yeah, how often are we going to be able to see any results?
So we are going to utilize our board monitoring calendar. And so we're finalizing that. We had a draft. For Esser, we only required every six months to bring you results. We're not comfortable with that. So we have a couple of things that we're going to do. We're taking our plans and actually, actually aligning them to our board goals. So the things that we have in place that we can bring you data and bring you updates. And we may not have like strong data points like every six weeks on some of our plans. It will take a little longer to get some of that data back. But we want to always keep you updated. So for the plans that are aligned to our board goals that are also on our board monitoring calendar, you're going to see those a lot more frequently. And then we would like to bring to you as well, some of our social emotional update. We have a very strong progress monitoring with how many touches we're making with our parents and with our students and give you updates on that as well. We also have in the works that we would like to, we will be bringing forward to you after we go through our RFP process, having an external audit who is watching us with implementation and making sure we're having a return of investment and able to give us audit the programs and initiatives we're putting in place and provide that data. So during year one, did it work? What results do we see? Year two, do we keep it? Do we change? And then of course, year three, we need to talk about sustainability and what is working and what's some other things not working. Let's just get rid of it because it's not impacting our students effectively. So you're going to spend a lot more time hearing from us and with our different plans. We find that these are short-term needs. It's almost like we did emergency constraints around COVID. Well, for us, our Esser funding is also very short-term emergency that we need to keep you updated constantly and also ourselves with accountability when we're bringing it to you and to our stakeholders. And we want to also highlight the work that our principals will be doing and our teachers will be doing. And there's nothing better to do that than to bring you updates and results. Because it's not us, it's our principals and it's our teachers that do those work and our support staff.
Actually hit the nail on the head when you said about accountability. We've heard the parents in our community and our stakeholders loud and clear and saying that, you know, they are holding us accountable, that this is going to be the year that we see the increase in our students' academic progress. So you hit the nail on the head and, and I'm glad that we will be seeing those results a lot quicker and seeing that what you are doing is working. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee, Dr. Michael Ryan.
Here we go. Guys, a good report. I've got one question. And we've got a really specific double block of kids for math and for literacy in sixth and seventh grade. And we, and we want them back to back classes. And the only problem I've got is you're talking about sixth and seventh grade students that have an attention span of about eight minutes and you've got them in there for nearly two hours? Are we going to break that down so they keep getting different, hit from different ways so they keep their attention?
Certainly. I think that's a great question. I think we've got to look at who those students are and, and the need that each individual student has. There will be very purposeful, there is already very purposeful direction on what those two classes look like. While they will be in the same classroom for a back-to-back back class period, their first core content class will look very different than their intervention class. Their intervention class is smaller group setting. So if they're working on individual tasks, they're working in groups, they're working with teacher and, and intervention programs. So think about instruction and then applying your instruction and having intervention. So, so while same class period, back-to-back, very different actions that are taking place that will get students engaged in, in their instruction as well.
Is that everything? Great. You all, thank you for a great report. And now we're going to have an instant replay and move over to Dr. Scribner.
Very much. At this time, we'll bring up our chief financial officer, who will provide the publication of proposed tax rate. We do a little housekeeping here at the front table.
And trustee, President Jackson, at this time, if, if you would, I'll introduce our chief financial officer, Mike Paul, and head of budget, David Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. It's a privilege to be before the board tonight. And we do have some good news. And as Dr. Scribner indicated, Mr. David Johnson, our senior officer for budget and finance is going to actually give you the specific specifics of the good news. David is a real expert on this stuff and has really been the one who crunched a lot of these numbers. The good news is we, we have a decrease in our tax rate that David will report to you on. And, and so we are, from a financial standpoint, we're in a great spot as a district, as has been said a few times tonight. And so I won't steal any more of, of his thunder, but we do have a great presentation on some good news. David, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Scribner, and board members. We do have good news, as Mr. Paul said. And let me run through. On July 22nd, we received this, can you hear me? All right. On July 22nd, we received the certified roll from the Tarrant Appraisal District. That roll showed approximately 6.5% growth over the prior year. We then present that information, provide that information to TEA. They go through a series of calculations. I performed a series of that calculation as well. They'll finalize that and approve us. That is due this week. That is in process. On August 14th, I will complete what is known as the Truth in Taxation Tax Rate Adoption Notice in the Fort Worth Star Telegram and publish that on the 24th. House Bill 3, one of the priorities of House Bill 3 was tax compression. So as the local tax base increases, and again, it did a little over 6.5% the current year, TEA provides us a mode for a calculation that calculates the MCR, the maximum compressed rate. Remember that we have two components for the maintenance and operation tax, the MNO, the, the maximum compressed rate is the baseline, and then the 17 pennies is the result of the taxpayer elections. We went through the VADER and the TRE. So the combination of those two comprises the, the proposed maintenance and operation taxes, tax rate, and that's $1.512. The current rate is $1.864. So we're looking at about a three and a half penny reduction on the proposed MNO rate that I'll go through the publications on. The debt service rate, which again is separate from the maintenance and operation that is used to pay debt, is 29.2. After the issuance of the recent, recent bonds that we settled on in, in July, that rate is still projected to be the same. So no increase in the debt service rate. The combination of the rates, the $1.512, MNO, the 29.2, INS, will produce a rate of $1.3432. Compare that to our current rate of $1.3784. We'll reduce, we'll provide a reduced tax rate, reduction in the tax rate of about three and a half pennies tonight. We don't need any board action tonight. We just wanted to go through that with you to kind of prep you and what's on the horizon and the timeline that'll happen over the next month. Can I answer any questions?
I think, if I might, President Jackson, there are two, I think, pickaways from that. We, we've mentioned a three and a half cent decrease in the rate and the, the increase in values with the, the interest and sinking fund rate remaining the same really provides capacity for the district to, if the board chooses at some point to call a bond election, it certainly provides the capacity, service, whatever bonds the board chooses to take for the voters. So increased capacity and a lower maintenance and operations tax.
Trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Jackson. So y'all just said the tax rate is going down. I just wanted to make sure that was actually said. And that we are in a good position as far as addition. Absolutely. And we got these extra funds, which we have a plan of action. That's a good financial report right there. Good job. No questions.
Okay. Looks like that's the only question, a clarification and some happiness and excitement from District 3. Okay, we will move along then. Thank you all so much for good news. And we'll move along to consent agenda items. As board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with board policy BBFA Local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on this agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Do we have any questions or concerns about consent agenda? Trustee Dar.
I need to push the button. He saw me reaching. First of all, after going through this over 400-page report, thank you. It's the beginning of the school year. Here we go. Big reports. The, I had a significant number of questions that I sent to leadership this week, and I appreciate the fact that you answered them timely and very thoroughly. And so I thank you for that because I know that that's time that you took to answer those questions. So thank you very much. Due to my employment with Region 11 and any potential conflict of interest that might be created by that employment, I refuse myself from any discussion or consideration of agenda item number B16, which is the approved proposed middle school and high school course changes for the 2021, 2022, 23, 2023, 24 school years. Thank you.
Trustee Evans.
I will be abstaining from B3. B3.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Trustee Brinkins.
Yes, I will be abstaining from the item that discusses actual programming with the YMCA.
Which number is that? Do we know? B5. And I too will be abstaining from B5. Okay. No other questions at all? Then we will recess and reconvene in the Then we will recess and reconvene in the board conference room. In accordance with the open meetings law, the board opened meeting at 5:30 PM with quorum present. Recession reconvened, open session adjourned, regular session convened, executive session adjourned, executive session and now reconvened, open session at 10:09 PM with a quorum present. We're now to number 12 on our agenda, accept consent agenda items. Uh, before I take the motion, I wanted to make the statement, even though we made it earlier in the evening. Uh, B3, we have, uh, CJ Evans has asked to be able to abstain. Thank you. It is after 10 PM. Uh, B5, Trustee Daphne Brinkins and myself will be abstaining. And B16, Trustee Dar will be abstaining. And with that in mind, do I have a motion accepting consent agenda items? Michael Ryan, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second? Second from the webanos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we could move to voting. And the motion passes unanimously with Trustee Martinez, a hand wave because her screen is frozen. Moving on to 13A, we do not have any items removed from consent agenda. We'll move to 13B, personnel. Executive Director pre-K through 12, student and school support, three positions. Do I have a motion? Or do you announce first, sir? Moved by Trustee Luabino, seconded by Dr. Ryan. Any discussion? Are we moving to voting? I, I don't have a screen that says we are. There we go. Okay, I've still missed one. Got them all. Unanimous. And the vote passes unanimous. Dr. Scribner, at this time, would you like to make an announcement?
Thank you very much, President Jackson, members of the board and Fort Worth, uh, school community. We are very excited, uh, tonight to name, uh, new executive directors in the North Side and the South Hills and the Southwest Pyramids. And I'll turn it over to, uh, our deputy superintendent Molinar to, um, introduce these spectacular individuals.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. Our first executive director, we would like to congratulate Dr. Dorian Benavides, who is currently our executive director of Equity and Excellence, will be moving over to be our student and school support executive director. Dr. Benavides. I don't see your family with you, but I consider, of course, Dr. Hall and Ms. Breed part of your immediate family. So we'll go ahead and introduce them for you. Our next, um, recommendation and approved recommendation is Guadalupe Cortez, who's currently the principal at Oakhurst Elementary. So we would like to welcome her as our new executive director. Ms. Cortez, would you like to introduce any family with you to this evening? Thank you. And just a fun note, her sister is also one of our campus leaders in the district, so. Our next, uh, approved candidate is Christine Renteria. She's currently our principal at Kirkpatrick Elementary. And she is our new executive director for student school support service. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scribner. We have three fantastic leaders just going to support our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you all and thank you all for waiting patiently. And I saw some kids with you earlier. Are they the ones that are now in bed? Cool. Tell them thank you as well. Alright, moving on to 14. Action item A, discussion and action to approve renewal of Edge Euphoria Premium Suite and Related Services. Do I have a motion? Moved by Trustee Evans, seconded by Trustee Luabino. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Oh, Trustee Dar.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson. Um, due to my employment with Region 11 and any potential conflict of interest that might be created by that employment, I refuse myself from any discussion or consideration of agenda item 14A.
Was moved by Trustee Evans, seconded by Trustee Luabino. Waiting for the screen to catch up so we can vote. We have seven yays and one abstention. Motion pass. 14C, discussion and action to approve workforce solution of Tarrant County contract amendment by extending the contract end date and allocate funding through August 31st, 2021 Adult Education Program. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Ryan, seconded by Trustee Dar. Any discussion? Let's move to voting. Uh, Daphne Brinkins, I'm sorry, you guys are getting quick on me.
Due to any potential conflict of interest that might be created by my relationship with workforce solutions of Tarrant County, I will be recusing myself from this one.
And the motion passes unanimously with one extension from Trustee Brinkin. And now we're gonna go backwards because that's always fun to do to 14B. Thank you, Trustee Dar. Discussion and action to approve addition of services to the existing shared services agreement with Education Service Center, known as ESC Region 11 for instructional services, materials, professional development, parent engagement opportunities and administration of services to private nonprofit schools that serve economically disadvantaged children who reside in the Fort Worth ISD attendance area. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Luabino. Trustee Dar.
Sorry, I have a busted mic. Due to my employment with Region 11 and any potential conflict of interest that might be created by that employment, I refuse myself from any discussion or consideration of item agenda 14B.
And now we'll move to voting. Seven yays and one abstention. Moving on to 14D, discussion and action to approve second reading revisions to Board Policy CFEA Local, DBD Local and DEE Local. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Ryan, seconded by Trustee Dar. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we could move to voting. And the motion passes unanimously. At this time, we'll move on to 15, comments by board members or our superintendent on current district activities and announcements. You could raise your hand while the screen catches up if you so desire. Trustee Brinkins.
Um, I just wanted to make an announcement about the epic event that we had for, uh, celebration for Ms. Opal Lee, July 18th at I Am Terrell. I wanted to thank, um, um, Fort Worth Police Department, Commander Ladd and her officers for participating in this event. Um, the African-American women's leaders and the host committee. I wanted to thank the, um, Fort Worth ISD staff, um, Mike, Mike Mountain, Karen, Malinar, um, Principal Brown and the rest of his staff for helping us make that event epic. Danny Garcia also. And also the elected officials who attended this event. It was a great event, uh, for Ms. Opal and, uh, it was an opportunity for the community to come out and to give her her flowers today, now, while she's still got all of her morals and is still running around the, the community doing great things. So it was a great event and, um, yeah, it was, it was well-attended at I Am Terrell. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brinkins. And on Saturday, uh, Trustee Ramos was out of town. I was honored to speak and deliver a certificate at the 1971 50th reunion of ML Kirkpatrick Wildcats. And I did so with my godfather, Bert Williams, who was actually a coach and a faculty member during these individuals' time. And it was very interesting to see them interact with him the same way I do. We all bow and, and, and smile. And here's the certificate and I will present that to President, to, uh, immediate past president, Saint Joe Ronalds Jr. upon his return. And on that note, we are adjourned.